Welcome. El siguiente mensaje será repetido en español. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will hear thirty minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, there'll be another and final opportunity for additional public comment. So if you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, you can stay and speak at the end. To participate in public comment, please raise your hand now by clicking on the purchase participants button at the bottom of your screen and selecting raise your hand. To comment by phone, you'll be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. If you wait to raise your hand until public comment period starts, you will not get to speak and you will have to wait until next public comment period. When called upon, you'll be promoted to panelists. This means that you will appear on screen. If you do not wish to appear on camera, please be sure to disable your camera on your end. The board president will usually call on our students first. So if you are a student who wishes to speak, please write student at the end of your name. The board president will determine whether to sit tonight's speaking time at one, two, or three minutes per speaker. On an individual basis, he also has the discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other speech needs. When your time has elapsed, you'll see Vice President Brown holding a sign letting letting you know you have fifteen seconds left. If you're still speaking, you are allowed to finish your sentence, but please try not, please. Don't speak beyond your time. Thank you. Voy a proporcionarles un resumen detallando el orden de esta reunión. Después de los procedimientos preliminares, un periodo de treinta minutos será dedicado a comentarios públicos. Al final de la junta, que usualmente puede ser cerca de las diez, habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para quienes desean participar en comentario público y parte de miembros de la audiencia que no tuvieron la oportunidad de proporcionar comentarios durante el primer periodo de comentario público. Para comentar por videoconferencia, por favor de levantar la mano ya haciendo clic en el botón participantes en la parte de abajo de la pantalla y selección el botón levantar la mano o raise your hand. Para comentar por teléfono, levanta la mano, presiona en dos tres a nueve. Por favor, decelo ya, ya que si se espera hasta el inicio del periodo de comentario públicos, tendrá que esperar hasta el final de la reunión para participar. Usualmente, el presidente llamará a los estudiantes primero. El presidente de la mesa directiva otará uno, dos, o tres minutos por orador y tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción o cualquier otra adopción especial. Al ser llamado, será formaciónada panelista y aparecerá en pantalla. Si no desea aparecer en pantalla, por favor de apagar su cámara. Cuando le faltan quince segundos, la vicepresidente le hará saber levantando un cartel. Si todavía está hablando, cuando se acaba el tiempo puede terminar su oración, pero por favor trate de no sobrepasar su tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much, Ms. Barrios. Welcome everybody to the December eighth meeting of the Berkeley School Board. For the record, we opened the meeting at five thirty P M. and recessed to close session. And it is seven oh five P M. right now. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll?
Director, Angela Mascarena Swan.
Director Mascarena Swan is absent today.
Okay. Director Ana Vasudev. Director Laura Babbitt.
Here.
Director Julie Sinai.
Here.
Vice President Kadija Brown.
Present.
President Ty Alper.
Present. Thank you. Now it is my honor to turn it over to Vice President Brown for her report on closed session.
Thank you, President Alper. I am so excited to give my final report out from closed session. For item three point one, it was moved by President Alper and seconded by myself, Vice President Brown, and the motion passed five to zero. For item three point two point one, the board heard an update. For item three point three, the board heard an update and provided direction. This is the reading from closed session.
Thank you so much, Vice President Brown. Next is item seven point one, which is the approval of the school meeting calendar for twenty twenty-two. I'm going to move to approve the school calendar, the school board meeting calendar for twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, my director Vassadev. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll for that one?
Director Vasudev.
Yes.
Director Babbitt.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right. So we have our board meeting calendar for twenty twenty-two. Now we're moving to item seven point two. And give me one second here. All right. Right now, now's the the moment where I get to make a motion that I've been looking forward to making for a long time. So if I'm a little giddy, you have to forgive me. I was going, I said to Director Vice President Brown earlier today that I've been looking forward to this since I was a little boy, which is only a little bit of an exaggeration. I've been looking forward to it since November of twenty fourteen, when Kadija Brown became the first actual practicing teacher currently teaching in a classroom elected to the Berkeley School Board, as well as I think the youngest board member ever elected to the board. And this past year and a half, it's definitely aged all of us. But I believe she will be the youngest president of the Berkeley School Board that we've ever had. And the first first president, who is also currently a classroom teacher. So those are two big milestones for our district. But I want to say it's not her age or the fact that she's a teacher, or even the fact that she's a proud graduate of the Berkeley Public Schools herself, as I am. She was just one or two years behind me at Berkeley High. The, don't laugh, Director Babbitt. The reason, the reason I'm so excited for for Director Brown, Vice President Brown, to become president of the board is because in the four years that I've known her, since we began campaigning for school board right up until today, I've come not only to appreciate her judgment, her brilliance, her dedication, but I've really come to rely on it. And I really mean that her instincts about educational policy, about budgets, about legal issues, about our role as board members. They're so sound, so rooted in empathy and compassion, but also vision and purpose. She's always thinking about kids. She thinks about them all day in her classroom. And I've visited her classroom and I've seen what a master teacher she is, but she thinks about them when she's up on the dais too. And in meetings with her, meetings with me and the superintendent, she she is constantly thinking about kids, all kids, and especially kids for whom the playing field does not start out level. I've learned so much from Kadija, and I'm very grateful to her for her service on this board and for the year that she's about to serve as president. Being president does require one to take on a fair amount of criticism. And I'm sure this will happen with Kadija, although I'm I'm sure that President Brown will make a lot fewer mistakes than I did. That said, I did want to make sure everyone knew her email address. It's Kadija Brown at Berkeley dot net. That's K A D I J A H Brown at Berkeley dot net. Make sure you write that down. And I'll stop there. Enough fanfare. This is the motion that I want to make now. So I'm going to move to nominate Kadija Brown as board president, Laura Babbitt as our vice president, and Ana Vassadev as our board clerk. These are three extraordinary dedicated board members and colleagues, and I'm really proud to nominate them for these positions.
And I would like to enthusiastically second your motion.
Thank you, Director Sinai. Ms. Barrios, can you call the roll?
Director Vasudev.
Yes.
Director Babbitt. Director Sinai.
Absolutely.
I don't know if I should say President Brown or Vice President Brown.
Well, it hasn't, the vote hasn't happened yet, so she's still vice president.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
And President Alper.
Yes. All right. Congratulations to all our new officers. I don't know, Ms. Barrios, if you have the ability to change our names, change our titles. Oh, no, we can change our, change them ourselves.
Yeah, I can, I can do that as well.
I'm just changing mine as quickly as I can. Okay. Congratulations, President Brown. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, outgoing President Alper. Good evening, everyone. I am so delighted to greet you in this official capacity. I would first like to say thank you to everyone for coming out tonight, and I'd like to take this moment of personal privilege to thank my parents, my mom, my dad, my family, my friends, and my village for your support and your presence at this meeting tonight. I am here because of you, because of the sacrifices that you made and for the, because of the ways that you prepared me for this very moment, as I stand as the youngest president of the Berkeley School Board in our district's eighty-five year history. To outgoing President Ty Alper, I was gonna make a billion jokes, but you were so sweet in your remarks, so I figured I'll keep it professional and say, thank you, thank you, thank you. You've made my life and my career on this board so easy. For many reasons, I'm on this board because of your help and your assistance to get me here, and I'm thankful that that support and assistance continued as a member on the school board. You are oftentimes a thought partner and a sounding board, and so I am incredibly appreciative of you. Additionally, you do not get enough credit for the ways that you have led us through one of the most challenging times, not just in education, but in our history. And so thank you for everything that you did for our district. Twenty twenty was definitely a challenge, but you brought us through, and we are all better because of your leadership and your dedication to our students and to the district. And so I know that I have some pretty big shoes to fill, but I promise you, I will walk in my very own pumps. Thank you, President Alper. To my board colleagues, Director Vasudev, Director Sinai, Director Alper again, and Vice President Babbitt, thank you for entrusting me with this precious role and for your confidence in me to lead our efforts as the president of board. It is a privilege to work with you and to partner with you in the success of our strong and mighty district alongside our illustrious superintendent, Brooke Stevens. The word team stands for together, everyone achieves more. As a board and as a team, we have achieved so much in this last year and a half. As a board and as a team, we've passed incredible resolutions like the climate literacy resolution, as well as the Black Lives Matter, AAPI, and Latinx resolutions, affirming, supporting, uplifting, celebrating the lives of our Black and African Americans and systemic racism. We committed to renaming schools that bear the names of enslavers. We have approved and managed three local tax measures that led to increases in teachers' salaries, ongoing support for school maintenance, and new school construction, some of which has already begun. We successfully managed the single largest budget reduction since the Great Recession with no reductions in staff positions or cuts to the classroom. We created and approved a new LCAP. And if that wasn't enough, we managed to get through a global pandemic, creating an entire business learning program, working hand in hand with our city, union partners, and district stakeholders. Our boots on the ground. But BUSD, we are ready for more. And as a school board, we will stand as a team to achieve more this year. More for our students, more for our staff, more for our faculty, and more for our families. As the president of the board, I am excited to share my vision for BUSD. This vision is rooted in a commitment to academic excellence and the holistic success of all of our students in Berkeley Unified School District. My firm belief, as President Alper said, is that education levels the playing field, provided that all students are afforded a quality education that is both equitable and accessible. Equity can't just be a buzzword that is paired with diversity and inclusion. Equity, however, must be an action word, and we as a board intend to put this into action. We are going into this year mission minded and equity focused. And this year, we will do more work to support all of our learners, because we know that there is no cookie cutter, one size fits all approach to educating our students. And we recognize that and will continue to do the work to support all of our students, specifically our Black and African American students, our English language learners, our sped learners, our early learners, and our most critical learners. We are committed to making our schools safe and accessible for all. I am excited to introduce the expansion of our new committees to be voted on by the board during the December fifteenth board meeting. These committees will help us to make our district's vision of enrichment, engagement, equity, and excellence a reality. Additionally, I am excited to announce that starting in twenty twenty-two, we will bring back our school snapshots during school board meetings with a special focus on equity and excellence, highlighting how we level the playing field for all of our students, so that everyone who is enrolled in BUSD will leave our academic program, achieving academic excellence and ultimately making positive contributions to our world. Berkeley, this year, we are committed to doing more, more. I am honored and thankful to be your board president. Thank you for the opportunity, and let's get to work. We have now reached, thank you, President Alper, for turning the meeting over to me. We have now reached the point in our agenda for public comment. Now is the time to raise your hand. If you wish to speak for public comment, you can raise your hand by using the Zoom raise hand icon located on the bottom panel. Once we begin the public comment period, anyone who raises their hand after we've begun will only be permitted to speak at the second public comment opportunity, and that will be at the end of the meeting. As Ms. Barrios told us in the beginning, if you are a student and you wish to speak, please put S or student behind your name so that you may be given priority to speak first. Based on how many people raised their hands this evening, let's see, hands, we will give each person three minutes to speak. So I've rambled enough so that folks could raise their hands. I'll give you just one more second to raise your hand if you need to speak. This is going to be the last opportunity. We have eight hands up, so I will call on those eight people. While you were speaking during public comment, Vice President Babbitt will hold up signs to let you know when you have fifteen seconds left to speak and while she will also hold up another sign indicating when your time is up. Once your time is up, you will be given permission to finish your last sentence, and then you will be collectively asked to give space for the next commenter to speak. We will begin our public comment period right now, beginning with Gladys Ocampo Stout, followed by Pat Riley. Ms. Barrios, can you please put Gladys and Pat on the dais?
Hello. Good evening. Before I start my statement, I just want to thank Director Ty Alper for all the work that you put in. This was a horrific year for many reasons, but really glad that you were heading up the the board during this time. And thank you so much, President Brown, for that very uplifting speech. It really, it made me very happy right now and very optimistic. So thank you. So I want to say good evening to everybody, to all the school board members and Superintendent Stevens. My name is Gladys Ocampo Stout, and I am a parent of two children in the district. I'm here representing Latinos and Latinos at Berkeley. We would like to thank the board members who spoke up against the proposal of budget cuts to the OFI position, specifically the bilingual specialist part-time position. We learned yesterday that the district has taken the position off the proposed budget cuts, and we are grateful to the superintendent and the district for removing it. We would like to emphasize the importance and the need of this position by giving examples of two current issues that are happening right now due to the lack of outreach to our Latinx community. Currently, the district is working on the English Language Learner's Master Plan and is also working with Gabe to host a series of trainings for Latinx families. There are workshops that started yesterday, and D-Like was presented with this information for the first time last week with literature that was only provided in English. Before the email the superintendent sent out four days ago, Latinx parents at multiple sites had mentioned to us that they did not know anything about any parent workshops. We have also been told by many families that they have heard nothing about the English Language Learner's Master Plan, planning meetings, which are supposed to have a parent and community engagement component. We have been told by the district that there are various targeted interventions for Latinx students, including Puente, STEM Steps, the Master Plan, Latino Literacy, Pique, Gabe. But if outreach is not intentional, thought out, and done properly, it's a waste of funds and staff time and does nothing for the Latinx community. We are concerned that this may be happening with other programs in the district and it and and has said would be that would be targeted interventions to help bridge the opportunity gap. This is especially hard to hear when the gap has grown wider for so many Latinx students due to the impacts of the pandemic. Latinx families make up twenty-three percent of the district, and we have zero district-wide engagement support. We look forward to the part-time Spanish bilingual position at the central office of the OFI, of OFI being filled to be able to help fill this gap. But we hope that in the meantime, there is more intentional and deliberate process when conducting outreach for these programs. We know hard decisions are being made regarding the budget, and we need to make sure that we are making the most of the resources we do have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ocampo Stout. Pat Riley, are you ready?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Right ahead.
Thank you, and thank you, Director Alper, and congratulations, Director Brown, on your appointment. I'm calling in tonight to request that the board consider communicating with parents about a plan to improve the school climate in our middle schools and our high schools. You may be aware that there was a KQED story yesterday, for example, that talked about where a BUSD senior talked about the chaos at Berkeley High. The Surgeon General just released a report nationally talking about the mental health crisis among our kids. We know, because I've presented in front of this board, and many parents here have talked about the crisis that our teens are experiencing in terms of the prolonged school closures. And as a parent, it would be so helpful to understand what the master plan is for Berkeley to address this crisis here in our community. And one step beyond that, what can parents do to help address that? I know that I receive many fundraising appeals to from the Booster Club, from my middle school, from Berkeley High, but I've never once received a request asking whether I wanted to be a sub, whether there was a way that I could somehow address some of the shortages that I know BUSD is experiencing that are making the school climate even worse. And I request that the board consider prioritizing the health and wellness of our kids, prioritizing communicating with parents about what the master plan will be for restoring and improving the school climate. I also request, since I have an incoming high school student, that when the school opens up for full vaccinations, that we reschedule an opportunity for incoming high school students to get a real tour of the high school rather than just a virtual one. I did participate in the virtual tour of Berkeley High, and what I can say is it was, it was really shaky because we didn't have a good internet connection. So I think having virtual events is not the same as having live events. And when we think about our school community and improving it, I think opening it up so that parents and students can enjoy non-academic activities that are filled with joy will do a long way towards that. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Next, we will have Rodney Brown, followed by Nate Wallace.
Rodney better not be shy.
Aloha, everybody. How's it going? Great, great. I like to say good evening and such a wonderful delight to even be here with you all in this momentous occasion. I'm so proud of Ms. Kadija Brown that I don't know what to do. Really over here shaking like a leaf on a tree, trying to conjure the words to say about this wonderful young lady. To have those accolades mentioned before in the earlier statement about her being the youngest human being in the history of Berkeley's eighty-five year tradition of being in the school district is such a wonderful thing to hear. But not just the the age thing, but I think just her acumen of adding such prestige and such wisdom to the dais is such a wonderful thing. I remember when Kadija came and got me one afternoon, and she was going to sign these papers to become a member of the school board, and I was being literally kidnapped because I didn't know really where we were going until we arrived up on the school board premises, shall we say, are the city of Berkeley premises to sign the papers. And so I was so ecstatic, and I just really didn't know what to think at the time except for to say a prayer and ask that God guide her in her footsteps in the proper direction. And so even doing the victory campaign party was such a tremendous thing to see up live and in person. I had never been associated with a thing of that caliber before. So that was such a wonderful delight to even partake in those festivities. The Queen and I one day had went out on the campaign trail, and we were over in West Berkeley passing out flyers and whatnot and having such a wonderful time. And we would go door to door and focus, hey, I know her, I'm going to vote for her. Thank you so much. And some people had already voted for her, which was a wonderful thing to hear. I don't think this is going to settle in until probably tomorrow, maybe a couple of days down the road when we realize that, hey, the young lady is now the president of the Berkeley School Board. And so we're just so delighted to just even hear her speak so eloquently earlier about what she planned to do in the year twenty twenty-two. And I want to thank all of you for serving on the dais as well and being great mentors to her and allowing her growth to take place. And I'm pretty sure it's an enduring task for all of you, especially during the precedents of what we dealt with concerning COVID nineteen and everything that's been associated with that. So I want to say to all of you guys, you know, keep on doing what you're doing, and I'm extremely proud of all of you in that regard. I've met a lot of famous people in my life. I've met Warren Buffett. I've met Elaine Brown. I've met Bobby Seals. But the most famous person I've ever met is Kadija Brown. And so I'm so delighted to say that. And salute to you, young lady. God bless you. We love you. Continue on. Peace.
Thanks, Daddy. Love you. Next, way to make me all nervous. Next, we will have Nate Wallace, followed by Dr. Darlene Willis.
Can't see anyone.
Nate Wallace, whenever you're ready.
Yes, good evening. Yes, I'm a father of a student at Berkeley High School, Naraya Wallace, and we're currently in this College Bound program that they're providing these kids information and a little education on what they can do after high school. And I think this is the best program I have seen thus far. And it's in existence right now, and I don't want it to go away. So I have my daughter here. We're going to share the same timeframe.
Hi, I'm Naraya, and I'm a part of the College Bound program. And I think that it's really beneficial for students of color. I know that it's helped me so far.
And congratulations, President Brown. And thank you this evening for giving me this time.
Thank you so much, Nate and Naraya, for your comments this evening. Next, we will have Dr. Darlene Willis, followed by Ms. Paula Phillips.
Hello, excuse me, and good evening. I'm Dr. Darlene V. Willis, and I am the proud executive director and co-founder of Concerned Parents Alliance College Bound Academy Programs. And how wonderful to follow Mr. Wallace and Naraya, our College Bound scholar and parent. First, I want to just recognize President Brown, congratulations. Also to Vice President Babbitt, congratulations. It's inspiring to witness this history tonight, and I'm excited to be a partner with Berkeley Unified School District for the College Bound Academy Programs. I wanted to personally invite all of you, do an open invite to everyone to attend a College Bound Academy program. We do meet this Saturday, December eleventh, from eleven to two, starting in January. And Superintendent can get you that schedule where we meet once a month for three hours, and we really inspire the scholars and their families. But most importantly tonight, I wanted to thank you, the entire board. Thank you for believing in College Bound Academy Programs, for partnering with us, for just accepting that, hey, we have, we have a challenge, and this program, you know, we were in LCAP thanks to Dr. Fisher and her African American success framework. We were mentioned in that. So we are delighted to be invited to be in this district, and I just wanted to sort of say our commitment to to this program, to the scholars. What makes our What makes our program different than others is that we work with the scholars and their parents, guardians, caregivers, et cetera. We focus on academic excellence and self-esteem building, racial equity and inclusion, college customized college tours. UC Berkeley was at our last meeting, the decision maker, one of the decision makers for UC Berkeley. Our senior that was present literally got one-on-one assistance with her application. It was just amazing. So I wanted to thank you again, to personally invite you and to ask. We got off to a little slow start, but I wanted to give kudos to the superintendent and Associate Superintendent Aurelio that literally came the very first meeting and and Director, well, now I guess Vice President Babbitt came to the meeting and literally were on the ground with us, trying to get speakers and make sure the PowerPoint was done. Kudos to the three of them as well. And a special kudos to Ms. Parker, who has just been amazing in recruiting our scholars into this program and their families. And I am just so excited. I'm on board with the equity and excellence. And I thank you so much on behalf of the College Bound Berkeley scholars and their parents. God bless you all. Happy holidays and stay safe.
Thank you so much, Dr. Willis. Paula Phillips?
Good evening to our listening public and to the school board. Uh-oh, I think. I don't know if you all can see me, but I can't see you.
We can see you. You're good.
Oh, here you go. Okay, I just want to say thank you and congratulations to Director Brown, I mean President Brown, Vice President Babbitt, and to Director Vasudeva. This is an historic moment for all of us, especially for the three of you being the first three women of color to hold such prestigious positions with the school board. And I want to congratulate you both. I know you all will be doing big things in the near future. I also want to say thank you to Director Alper as the former board president. And I also want to say, I don't know what it is. I can remember the moment or the day that you and I, Director Alper, met to meet, to talk about BCC's endorsement. On the way in, I stepped in a pothole and broke my foot. Earlier this week or last week, I slipped down the stairs and twisted my ankle. So two momentous, two memorial, two very memorable moments is going to me with Director Alper as a candidate and with Khadijah Brown. I don't know what it is about my feet and presidency positions, but I will always remember the two and tie the two together. So I just want to say congratulations and I look forward to working with all of you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And keep your feet on the ground. Don't put them up in the air flying. And thank you for being here tonight. Our last public comment tonight, we'll go to the person who raised their hand during the public comment period, and that will be Darryl Bartlow. Any other public comments? I see some other commentators' hands will have to be given during the second opportunity for public comment, which will be at the end of the meeting. Ms. Badios, if you haven't already, please come up, Darryl Bartlow, as our last comment for this open session for public comment.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I also want to acknowledge all the people that are in the little boxes. I'm Darryl Bartlow. I'm a parent of a ninth grader. I went to Berkeley High. I finished in 1965. I was All-American in track and field. I'm a member of their Athletic Hall of Fame. I was blessed to have a counselor who advocated for me with the college of my choice as well as another counselor, Palmer Witit, who was instrumental in me getting a full scholarship to Texas Southern University. That's just to highlight the value of people associated with the BUSD and their positive effect on an individual student as he furthers his journey past high school. The other thing I want to say is the College Bound Academy is in good hands with Ms. Willis and Ms. Parker. I wholeheartedly endorse it and humbly request that you support and back that program up to the fullest. My careers ended with a thirty-year tenure with the Alameda County Probation Department. I started as a counselor at Juvenile Hall and I completed as a deputy probation officer. Now, here's the point I'm trying to make. I have seen firsthand children who fell through the cracks of the school system. And I see where they end up. And it's unfortunate that they end up there because oftentimes it's a stringboard to the prison industrial complex in America. I can't emphasize by experience of myself and observation of other kids the value of a program like the College Bound Academy. It is greatly needed and at this time, very needed. So with that, I thank you for letting me talk. And I have my ninth grader, Lilia Bartlow, who has a comment or two also, and hopefully I'm underneath my three-minute limit. Thank you again.
Hi, my name is Lilia. This College Bound program gives Black students opportunities to enter great colleges. They also help us keep our grades up so we can enter higher-grade universities. I am very proud to be a part of this College Bound Academy. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lilia, and thank you so much, Mr. Bartlow. It's a joy to have a living legend online with us this evening. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right, this ends our public comment opportunity. As I said before, if your hand is still up and you wish to speak, you will have a second opportunity to do that at the end of this meeting. You can also send your comments to us directly at boardofed@berkeley.net or you can contact us individually. All of our information is posted online, but please first send it to tyalper@berkeley.net if you want all of your comments to get to the rest of the board. There one more time, like you put my email. No, but please, in honesty, you are more than welcome to email your comments to us individually and to us as a school board. If you do not have our information, it is posted at www.berkeley.net/schoolboard. We will now have the opportunity to hear from our unions. Our unions include BCC, BFT, UWA, and Local 21. If there are any comments tonight, commenters from those unions, please raise your hand to speak, Ms. Badios. I believe we have a video from Matt Meyer, the Berkeley Federation of Teachers President. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, we are ready to receive the video whenever you want.
Hello, Dr. Stevens and the BUSD Board of Directors. I am Matt Meyer, President of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. Today, you will begin discussion of potential budget cuts. Even though the true vote will not happen until February, it is important to understand the impact some of these reductions now. As a member of the Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee, I am not speaking for the group, but just as a participant. BFT believes that there are many places where the district is overspending on contractors. The budget document you will see today brings many of these services in-house. This is a positive development. These employees would have contracts, be full members of their school sites, and be treated just like other employees doing the same work. I want to caution us on making any immediate decisions regarding teachers on special assignment in the U9 program at Berkeley High School. The Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee did not vote yet on these items because so much is still unknown. The district has not been able to say how much of the TSA proposed cut is vacant. A cut to TSAs is in fact a teacher layoff as that person takes a classroom position pushing someone else out. The job of the TSAs still needs to get done, oftentimes dealing with federal compliance, planning for professional development, supporting our programming at school sites, writing special education assessments, and so much more. Without more information, Sback cannot weigh in. Although on paper, the LEAP classes in the U9 are under-enrolled. In practice, consolidating them will have unintended consequences on the program as a whole. Teachers will be split between the ninth grade and another school community at the high school. The support that currently exists will drop off and what makes the ninth grade program successful will be lost. More work needs to be done investigating some of these unintended consequences before members of the Sback can weigh in on this item. In general, BFT believes in reducing vacant positions before we start laying off actual employees. To continue to budget for a vacant position means that a person could be laid off if the budget target remains the same. We also believe alternatives like retirement incentives need to be fully investigated before our new teachers start receiving pink slips. We are glad all of these conversations have begun now so that any cuts that are made are deliberate and well-intentioned as well as fully thought out. I also want to remind the board that all four unions have expiring contracts this year and the district needs to plan ahead to get ready for this year's negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Meyer. Are there any committee comments this evening? Seeing none, we will now move to board member and superintendent comments. I'm going to ask Director Vasudeva, would you mind going first?
Sure. Thank you so much, President Brown. It was really lovely to hear your father give comments. So I was going to say shout out to him. That was really lovely. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I'm especially grateful to hear all the community members and all the students that came to speak about the kind of support they would like to see in our district and to speak of the College Bound program. It was really lovely to hear from our students tonight. I also wanted to thank Matt Meyer and the Berkeley Federation of Teachers for just the really specific feedback on the budgeting process. I think that's really important and hopefully but the public can get a sense of some of the difficult choices that we have to make and the dilemmas that we have before us. Congratulations to my colleagues, President Khadijah Brown and Vice President Babbitt. I'm very proud to serve with both of you as well as with Director Alper and Director Sinai. Last week was the California School Boards Association Conference. I don't know how many members of the public know about that, but that's a really important conference for us school board directors. I was able to attend along with Vice President Babbitt and Director Sinai. And we attended panel discussions focused on the fiscal outlook of school districts in 2022 and how and other panels focused on how districts are dealing with COVID-19. It was a great time to meet other school board directors throughout the state and to share best practices with one another. I also attended various events for the California Latino School Boards Association, another board which I serve on. And it was wonderful to be in the company of other Latinx school board directors throughout the state that are working diligently to close the opportunity gaps for our most vulnerable students. I also met many districts just like ours that are making budget reduction recommendations. And we all discussed how difficult yet necessary this process is to make sure that our schools are in a stable financial state. I'm looking forward to tonight's discussion regarding updates about important equity initiatives, the updates on the community engagement process for our middle school assignment, and a look at the general fund budget reduction proposals. I'm grateful to all the educators and community members who have taken part in the various budget-related meetings to help us get up to this point. I've been able to attend some of those meetings, like our DLAC meeting, and it was great to hear the feedback directly from the community about how these reductions are going to impact on some of the services that they need for their students. Lastly, I just want to remind everyone that I will be having office hours this Sunday, December 12th, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. at Lavender Bakery on Solano. I hope to see you there. I hope to hear just how the fall has been going for everybody and also to answer any questions that the public may continue to have about our proposed budget reductions and some of our priorities for the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Vasudeva. Director Sinai, would you like to go next?
Oh, I would love to, and I love the level of direction you're providing.
Thank you.
I just want to start off by really congratulating President Brown and Vice President Babbitt for stepping up to lead us through this next year. We are still going to have a very challenging year and I appreciate the commitment that you two are making to help us guide, help guide us through this. I too want to remember the first time I met President Brown when she, you know, came to speak at the MLK Breakfast in 2017 and a number of us were like, we've got to get her to run for the school board. Deeply rooted in the community, deeply passionate about the lives of all of our students and particularly our Brown and Black students who, you know, you've experienced it firsthand as going through from this district. And so I have loved campaigning with you. I have valued serving with you and I look forward to the coming year. And Director Babbitt, or Vice President Babbitt, you know, we've known each other for a really long time and I knew you would be here on the school board at some point in time. And I really appreciate how you have championed all of our students and our students of color and our parent advisory committee and accountability, accountability, accountability. So I look forward to really elevating those issues in the coming year. And Clerk Vasudeva, I really am happy to pass the baton on to you to sign all these various resolutions that represent the heart of what this school board really stands for. So congratulations to all of you and I'm really honored and thrilled to serve with you. And, you know, Director Alper, I am really sad to see you off of the presidential dais and the jokes that you constantly make as we try to maneuver through this. But I really want to thank you for your leadership through probably, I would say, more than any other year and a half or almost two years that this district has experienced, whether it's been budget cuts, whether it's been strikes, whether it's been whatever. Nobody in the history of this district has ever had to deal with a pandemic and deal with the hard and difficult decisions. And, you know, not all of our decisions might have been the best ones or the right ones, but they were the best ones at the time for us to make and you shepherded us through that and I really appreciate it. So I'm excited for the next year and we've got a lot of work to do. I too would like to kind of echo Director Vasudeva's comments about the California School Board Association. I was honored to be able to present on an educator housing panel on the first day of the conference. Lot of interest in the state around providing housing. I started off the panel with a show of hands of how many people in the audience are having challenges recruiting or retaining their teachers and staff due to the high cost of housing. And universally, everybody raised their hand. So we're not in this alone. There's been some amazing research that's been led by UCLA and UC Berkeley, some of our own parents who are researchers at the City, the Center for City and Schools at UC Berkeley, who've done a study on educator housing and a toolkit so that lessons we've all learned can get passed on to our colleagues and lessons other folks have learned can get passed on to us. So I brought extra copies for all of my board colleagues and we can share as we continue down this path of providing educator housing in the coming years. Also at the CSBA conference, I was thrilled that the keynote speaker was Dr. Victor Rios, a Berkeley High grad, alum, who through his lived experience has just made a phenomenal impact on students throughout the state in providing leadership and guidance and training to districts. And he pays tremendous honor and homage to Flora Russ, a teacher that we all know, you know, from Berkeley High, who failed to look at him or his, you know, fellow students as at risk and more of at promise. And to really look at kind of, you know, when we think about growth mindset, that our mindset is our students can achieve and our students have the ability and the potential to achieve, you know, post-secondary education, the careers and vision of their life as long as we all support them in their growth and we provide the platform and the lift so that all of our expectations are that our kids will succeed. And so it was exciting to see Dr. Rios on that statewide stage and for him to be honoring Berkeley High teachers and the work that we, you know, did while he was there. And lastly, I want to thank Mayor Aragín and Council Member Terry Taplin, who's the representative for District Two, for their leadership in making sure that science, technology, education, engineering, arts and math, education and career, technical training and career pathways remain in the 30-year extension of the Bayer Agreement. They voted on the first reading last week and there was universal support for close to 50% of the Community Benefit Agreement in the 30-year extension goes to STEAM Education. And that gets divided up among K eight high school and community college in order to ensure robust pathways. It's a continuation of the work that Bayer and the city with the school district started in 1992 to offer opportunities to our black and brown students, primarily from South and West Berkeley, to go through a biotech academy that's at Berkeley High and see high-paying jobs right here in the Bay Area. So that program will continue for another 30 years. And I want to give a shout out to Director Vasudev, who helped shepherd that through with the school district. And big shout out to Wynn Skills, our program director for CTE. He not only helped manage the education and information of our council colleagues about what are CTE programs. He he brought them to our sites to show them our programs, the videos. He really represented what we do well and helped to pave the way for continuation. And recently, he just secured, I think, within partnership with other district staff, another $2 million for our CTE program. So huge shout out to Wynn Skills. You know, when we started to revitalize our CTE programs, we were really, you know, not 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 the poster child district in CTE. And now, five years later, six years later, we are really at the cutting edge of CTE and, you know, Wynn Skills and his team with Barrett and Stephanie Allen have really just done an amazing job with all of our CTE teachers and the program. So I just want to end with like, thank you, Wynn, and, you know, onward. Oh, what? Sorry, one more thing. I have to cancel my open office hours this Friday, this Sunday due to a family issue. I will resume them in January.
Thank you, Director Sinai. Director Alper, I believe, almost called you president now, but Director Alper, I believe you gave your your comments already.
I did a quick, I just wanted to say one thing that Director Sinai reminded me of, which is about Wynn and the CTE and just what you said. Director Sinai, just made me think about our former colleague Karen Hemphill, who I'm sure is not watching tonight, but she was also one of the, you know, early supporters and leaders in in our CTE efforts and and it really is pretty amazing to think about how far we've come. And so I wanted to thank her and then also, as you said, thank Wynn and and the other members of our staff who who secured those grants just recently to to continue to improve that program that we really are leaders in. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Alper and Vice President Director Babett. Are you ready?
Yes.
All right, ahead.
Thank you. So good evening, everyone. I'd like to make a couple of announcements and then I'd like to address my thoughts on becoming the Vice President of the Board. So my first announcement is for a film screening tomorrow night at 6:30 p.m. at the New Way Parkway Theater in Oakland, California called On These Grounds. It was produced by a Rosa Parks parent. And the subject is, as a video goes viral showing a white police officer in South Carolina pull a black teenager from her school desk and throw her across the floor, healer activist Vivian Anderson uproots her life in New York City to support the student and dismantle the system behind the assault at Spring Valley, including facing the police officer. This invitation is especially hopes to reach parents, students, educators, administrators, and school board members, policymakers and organizers. The film is not rated, but they consider it PG-13 based on language and violence. It will also have a panel discussion post the screening, which will also feature one of our parent advocates for equity, Casey Robinson. So again, that is tomorrow, December 9th at 6:30 p.m. Tickets are $15 and at the New Way Parkway Theater in Oakland. Secondly, as we approach the holidays, I want to thank the Berkeley Public Schools Funds for all of their work and their continued partnership with the Office of Family Engagement and Equity to collaborate to raise funds for holiday gift cards for our families. They're working to provide 700 BUSD families $50 gift card to be delivered between now and December 17th. And we know last year they gave and gave and gave so much to our families during the pandemic. I just want to remind everyone that so many families are still struggling and still recovering. So please continue to give and to support these efforts to spread some love and holiday cheer to students and families. There's a tiny URL, three W M V S N C K in which you can give, and I'm sure you can find more information on the Berkeley Public Schools Funds website. Next, I'd like to thank my board colleagues for entrusting me with the role of Vice President as it is my honor to support our new Board President Khadija Brown and the vision she so eloquently described this evening. I would also like to thank our past Board President Alper for leading BUSD through such a difficult time. At the California School Board Conference, I met so many people who had been on school boards for 20-plus years. Every time, I was shocked. When I told them I joined during COVID, they said, oh, that's why you can't imagine being on the board so long. So thank you to former Vice President Brown and President Alper for all of the hard times you felt personally as our board leaders during this tenure. As I was reflecting upon the transition to Vice President and where we currently are in BUSD, I also looked back at my campaign promises. Help BUSD safely reopen schools. Check, but still work to do. Parents and guardians, especially those of color, need to be more involved with what is happening on the school grounds. Looking back at my older two BUSD alums, it was my ability to volunteer, observe and learn in the ways in which they are learning now that helped me to be able to properly support them. Teachers need those classroom volunteers who so tangibly support the work they do, from grading papers to helping students grow and learn. Students need overnight camp experiences. Families need to be more involved as a community in person. I look forward to continuing the progress to fully reopen our schools and even to return to in-person school board meetings. Help BUSD address climate change. Funded Climate Literacy Resolution. Check on its way. Help BUSD cut red tape. New HR and financial system integration upgrades in process. Check on its way. Implement programs and services through the lens of equity. Well, you will hear more about those ongoing efforts tonight. Check on its way. With all that is on its plate, I must say that I am still glad to be able to serve this community. You, the family, staff and students of BUSD community make me thankful. Through ups and downs, we still have each other. And with each one supporting one, we can continue the goals of our city that our city has continuously supported in each election. I look forward to leading with that continued spirit of my ancestors. S, strength. P, perseverance. I, imagination. R, responsibility. And T, talent. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice President Babett. And finally, our Superintendent, Superintendent Stevens, are you ready for your comments?
I'd better be head night for the round.
All right, ahead.
I can I can feel the new regiment already. So I want to join all of the board members and congratulating both you, President Brown and Vice President Babett. Congratulations. I'm very much looking forward to working with you over the course of these 12 months and know that your leadership is going to be really instrumental over these this year in navigating a number of challenges that we can already see on the horizon. Khadija, a special word for you. You know, I have known now during the time that I have had a chance to work with you that you're a very special individual. It's a little haunting sometimes to be 20 years your senior and be so frequently learning from you, to be touched by your wisdom and to see all of the insights. You truly are a remarkable person. And so I know that the board is in very good hands, as I think the district is as well. So congratulations to you and please know that you've got 100% of my support as we move through this together. I wanted to as well thank outgoing President Alper. I know lots of people have said it, but this last 12-month period has been indescribably difficult. I just cannot list the sheer number of challenges and the complexity of the challenges that we've had to go through together as a community. I know that Ty, it was, I think, an act of service for you. And I think I think that you really felt that you had both an obligation and an ability to hold a lot of the emotional challenge, some of that electrical charge that has built up in this community for such a long time, like it has across the country. And I think you did an outstanding job of that, of listening, of acknowledging, of holding all of that energy and then translating it into action for all of us. So for that, I'm very grateful and I know that all of the staff feels that way as well. So thank you to you. Don't disappear too fast, though. Still need you around. Yep, there he goes. I would love to introduce to the board a new colleague. This is equally for our community and I'm going to ask her now to to actually turn on her camera as Director Alper turns his off. I'm really happy to welcome our incoming Coordinator of Title IX, Ms. Yasmina Vteskic. I hope I've said your name right and you'll correct me if I haven't. Now, in the middle of her second week here in Berkeley Unified, and she's been very, very busy over the last, what, eight days, getting to know our community and, I think, much to her credit, focusing her effort on getting to know our young people at Berkeley High School. I think you've been on campus now multiple times. You've had meetings with multiple student advocacy groups. And I'm really impressed that that has been your top priority to get over to the high school and to make yourself known to young people. So I'd just like to turn the mic over to you, give you an opportunity to introduce yourself to our board and to our community and again to say welcome to you.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens, and thank you to all the directors. Congratulations, President Brown and Vice President Babett. I'm very excited to be here on this very big night for both of you, like it is for me. So we're all starting together. It has been a very incredible and dynamic week for me. The last eight days at Berkeley High mostly, but also some of the middle schools have been very rewarding because I got to meet some of the most incredible, intelligent, very vibrant and empathetic students. And I think that our student body is definitely the biggest asset of our community. That's on one hand. And then on the other hand, we have very dedicated and hardworking administrators that are really trying hard to have this expertise in this very complex Title IX world. And so I also want to give them as much support as possible. Like Dr. Stevens said, I will be focusing most of my time in the beginning just speaking to students and really hearing them and what their needs and concerns are so that we could make the Title IX office more accessible for them. I feel that I'm here for them and they are my number one priority. So I am very excited about next year and I think that we are in a very good place right now. So and with you and your support, I think it's going to be great. So thank you so much for having me.
Welcome aboard, Yasmina. And please know you have our full support. I'd also like to call out your two colleagues as well, Ms. Mary Keating, who is our Title IX investigator, just celebrating her one-year anniversary with the district, and Megan Farrell, who will continue on with us. She's been serving as interim Title IX Coordinator for a number of months, but will stay on board as a support for all of us. Welcome.
Thank you.
A few more special announcements, a couple of colleague announcements that feel important to me. So I'm going to ask her just to give us a little smile today. It's Pauline Follinsby's birthday. Happy birthday to you. We planned this board meeting on your birthday, especially for you, Pauline. You're welcome. We also want to say happy birthday to Ruben's wife. It's her birthday. She's gonna, they'll be having blackberry pie at home after this meeting is over sometime about 1:00 a.m. And then finally, Sean Mansiger is also in our participant list right now. His birthday is tomorrow. We've got a stack of Sagittarius is among us. So happy birthday to every single one of you.
Sorry to interrupt, but I also heard someone else has a birthday on Monday. And that's you, Superintendent Stevens?
That may be true. I'm not sharing. It's a fine month, I'll say that. So a couple of community announcements that I'd love to be able to share. January 3rd, when we come back from winter break, will be the first day that we are enacting the Board of Education's policy that requires all of our students 12 and older either to be vaccinated or to take a test once per week. We've already begun a campaign of communicating with families about that requirement, making sure that we get information out to those communities about how to become vaccinated or how to register to take a free, easy test on our campuses. We'll continue that communication that will include more direct mailings to families once the January date arrives and we'll be reaching out as well to guide families toward resources that can help them comply with that policy. I'd also love for members of the community to be aware that in addition to the vaccination or testing requirement for students who are 12 and older, there's also a number of additional requirements or rather activities for which vaccination will be required. They include things like overnight field trips at the point that we can permit them, senior prom and other school dances, school-sponsored student gatherings, providing off-campus mentoring and tutoring to younger BUSD students, one-time events to take place later in the school year and a number of different activities as well. We'll be sharing information with the community about that list of activities, but we encourage all folks to get vaccinated if they're intending to participate in those activities. For students who are five through 11, please know that we've got lots and lots of opportunities still to be vaccinated. This effort to offer vaccine clinics through our partnership with City of Berkeley, I think, has been very successful to date and we will continue it. We have a brand-new webpage on our BUSD website that is dedicated exclusively to vaccination resources. We'll get that link out to the community over and over again, but really hope that folks will check there. That's a great repository of information about where you can find vaccines here locally. We're also very happy that we're going to be sending COVID-19 test kits home with all of our students for next week. We just took possession of about 12,000 kits. We'll be distributing those to our school sites over the next several days. And those kits are for peace of mind. We're sending our students home with those kits so that they can be used when needed or use that final weekend of the break just to be sure that your child is safe as he or she returns back onto campus. Like we did after Thanksgiving break, we're also going to be offering expanded testing clinics on January 3rd and January 4th. Over at Berkeley Adult School, you'll find that we'll have a testing kiosk open to families during the entirety of the day. That's for folks who may have traveled, folks who have some concern about potential COVID-19 risk. You know, you can know that there will be clinic staff there at Berkeley Adult School on the third and fourth all day long, even during the school day, and you can stop by for either a rapid test or a lab-based PCR test as well. And then finally, I'm happy to get on to a number of different presentations, including very excitingly, an update on our African-American Success Initiative. Very happy to have Dr. Robin Fisher with us. We'll introduce her in just a few minutes. We'll be describing as well work taking place on our multilingual master plan as well as very specific efforts to engage EL and Spanish-speaking families. We've got an update on a number of months of community engagement related to the middle school student assignment policy and as well, we'll be looking at sort of a preview preliminary list of potential reductions that will be led by Assistant Superintendent Pauline Follinsby. She'll also walk us through the first interim report for the year. So this is an engaging and action-packed meeting. I'm very happy that we have the chance to share all this information. With that, President Brown, I'm going to turn it right back to you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Stevens. You are right. This is going to be an engaging and impactful meeting. So we are going to go get straight to it. But thank you, Superintendent, for your comments. And I'd also like to say happy birthday to Superintendent, Associate Superintendent Follinsby, Ms. Aurelio, and also to you, Brent, on Monday. And give a welcome to our new coordinator, Ms. Vteskic. Welcome to Berkeley Unified School District. At this time, we need to now approve the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Moved by Director Sinai, seconded by Director Alper. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll?
Sure. Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Vice President Babett?
Yes.
And President Brown?
Yes. Thank you so much.
We will now move on to our discussion items, as he will introduce us to Dr. Fisher, as well as give us a brief summary on our presentation on the update on African-American Success Initiative, community engagement efforts. So, Dr. Stevens?
Great. Thanks so much. Great, thanks so much, President Brown. I am co-presenting with a number of folks this evening. I'll introduce them. Ruben, first, I wonder, would you be willing to share your screen?
Sure, let me pull that up. Make sure I'm in presenter mode. Okay, one sec. Thumbs up if you all can see. Perfect.
Perfect, thank you. So before we jump in, I'd love to introduce a few folks, both to the board and members of the community. And I'm just checking my Zoom screen to make sure that they have appeared now. So first, I'd love to introduce Dr. Robin Fisher. Dr. Fisher, there you are. So welcome to you. Really appreciate you being here with us and the partnership over the course now of more than a year of work together. And then as well, we have our manager of the African-American Success Project, that is Mr. Kumar O'Gwynn, and we'll invite him to appear from the shrouds of Zoom. Welcome to you, Kumar. Glad to have you here tonight. So what we'll do together, the four of us, is provide an update on work specific to one component of a larger initiative. We have been in the midst of work over the course of the last year under sometimes difficult conditions to sort of further define and launch a project to support African-American students and families here in the district. We are building from many years of work, lots and lots of insight from many smart people who have been working before us on this very task, and trying to take those learnings, put them into a new framework, and come up with an initiative that will be longstanding, that will be thoughtful, and that will be impactful. So we'd love to bring you up to speed on all of this work together. I'll do a little bit of the introduction, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues. So tonight, we hope to talk a little bit about why we are sort of developing a framework for African-American success. So we will refer over and over again to an African-American success framework. We hope to be able to place that framework in the context of a larger initiative, an initiative that includes sort of multiple aspects that are intended to impact classroom performance, that are impacting interventions and enrichment programs, as well as family engagement and other aspects of our district work. We'll talk a little bit about how we're both creating a framework and designing programming at the same time, something that we're going to call Design and Build, and then we welcome a discussion with board members as we conclude. So let me talk a little bit about why this work is so important. And Ruben and Dr. Fisher and Kumar, if you can sort of help me remember what we agreed on in advance about who is speaking when. I admit I don't have my notes in front of me at the moment.
I think you are on until slide five, and then I will take over.
Keep me going. Thank you very much. Let's talk a little bit about why this work is important.
This is you, Dr. Stevens.
Thank you very much. So we have been aware for many years, and again, many smart people have put their heart and soul into conversations about supporting African-American students and their families here in Berkeley. And those efforts have brought successes. They've brought some heartaches. They've brought some frustrations. But those efforts are not to be ignored. There have been many smart people, including Director, now Vice President Babbitt and others, who have brought their intellect, who have brought their rigor and passion to this very project. We know, despite many successes, like an increased graduation rate up now into the low 90 percentage points for African-American students that we continue to have, many discrepancies in our data. Those discrepancies affect disciplinary outcomes, like a suspension and expulsion. They affect referrals to special education, and they also affect academic outcomes. We know very well that these are systemic issues. These have to do with our district, and we know that they're solvable. This is a belief that we all have and hold fervently, that we can make a difference, can and will make a difference. So this moment right now, stepping into new board leadership, is a moment, I think, of reinvigorating the stream, as well as sort of applying the lens of accountability and rigor to the way we go about our work.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. I will take it from here. So the next few slides I'm going to be sharing, just information about the African-American Success Framework. I will have to, I do want to say that back in July, when I came on board, this is one of the initiatives that was really appealing in joining Berkeley and seeing that the efforts that were being put to really change the outcomes for African-American students. Just to make sure that we're using the right terms, I think I've heard Dr. Stevens mention the Greater Initiative, which is the African-American Success Initiative, that includes the framework. The framework is really the written document that really shares the districts and communities' view on African-American students' strengths, opportunities, and challenges, and also will be the development of a theory of change and how we do things in Berkeley. So the African-American Success Framework really is an ongoing investment in the improvement for African-American students and the community here in Berkeley. It consists of a three-year strategic plan with recommendations, and our partner in this work is Robin Fisher and her team. That includes the review of internal data, document reviews, listening circles. Some of this work occurred over the past year and is continuing into this year. And then the increased stakeholder engagement, further analysis of what we do here in Berkeley, what we're doing right, what we need to improve, and then coming up with a written plan for that. This slide is really exciting for me, because I'd like to see things sort of really actionable. And this slide starts to show us now the Greater Initiative and how the framework is supporting these sort of, what I like to call these five buckets of major work. We know we need to improve our Tier One instruction for African-American students, and that's really key and important. So we are tackling that with, you'll see later in the presentations, some professional development where teachers really reaching our teachers at that level. We also know that coupled with the Tier One instruction, we have to have really powerful Tier Two interventions in place for our students. So we are looking at those features, that some of that work is also included in our CCAS plan and working for our Five Vision Schools. We'll share some of that information. In addition to those two tiers, we have to ensure that we're providing these affinity-based programs. You heard earlier in public comments, one of those programs, College Bound, which we've started this year, working with their ninth through 12 graders, really focused on providing college-going resources for our students. We need to increase our family engagement. College Bound, another example of really blending the student and family component. And then, of course, a data dashboard, which is the lens or the flashlight that shows us how we're really doing. And I know we're in the process with Robin Fisher's team and our Director, Brad, to really develop this dashboard. Finally, it's always great when we're talking about student groups to really look at the numbers and what we're actually facing. And this slide here shows us our actual enrollment of African-American students in Berkeley Unified. You can see by grade level how many students we're talking about. I, one special note, this is strictly our African-American student population. These numbers don't, on this slide, include students that are mixed race, who characterize themselves as two or more races. So that's, we know that when we are targeting our students, that we have to factor that into the work that we do. I'd like to turn it over. There we go. Sorry about that. It jumped three slides ahead. There we go.
There we go.
I would like to introduce Kumar O'Gwynn. Thank you, Kumar.
Good evening, all. Again, Kumar O'Gwynn, Manager of the African-American Success Project. So how does this become the reality? How are we going to bring this framework together? Next slide, please. So we know that there's an African tradition, Sankofa, meaning that we have to literally go back and get it. And with that said, is that we know that there has been historical efforts to right the ship and remedy the wrongs that have happened for our students in this district. And we wanted to go back and make sure that we highlighted some of those past efforts for two reasons. First and foremost, there are learning opportunities there, right? There's a lot that has been done since 1968, when Berkeley High School developed the first Black Studies Department in the country, leading up all the way to the Vision 2020 citywide effort to help address root causes and do the analysis and the deep work that needs to happen on behalf of our students and families. And then more contemporary, looking at the beacon of light that has come from our school board with the Black Lives Matter resolution, et cetera. And so we literally have to go back, learn from the past, because that's going to inform how we move forward in the future. Next slide, please. And with that, President Brown mentioned that we have to be mission-minded. I like that term, that we have to be mission-minded. In order to stay on mission and stay on task, we have to have a foundation. And so this slide represents some strategic pillars that we want to conduct, create, develop, and build. So we want to conduct stakeholder engagement opportunities. This work began last year with Dr. Fisher and team through our principal learning circles, our African-American affinity-based town halls. But we know that any process that is going to be put forward to benefit African-American students in our district has to be done with community, and so we're going to conduct strategic opportunities for stakeholder engagement. From that community input and stakeholder engagement, we then are going to be able to build and create our strategic actions. And with those strategic actions, we can then identify our partners who can provide the direct services that are uplifted in that narratives and those trends that we see in that data. Associate Superintendent Aurelio has already mentioned College Bound, and we've heard some of the great things that have happened. That is some of the early work that has happened throughout this process already, and you see us making some actions towards that. So this is a process that has been building over the course of the last school year into this school year as well. And from there, in order to be mission-minded, we have to have a compass. We have to have a GPS so that we know that as we're traveling on this mission, whether or not we're going in the right direction. And so by that, we must develop impact-oriented metrics to make sure that the system that we're developing is really having an impact that we wanted to have, and we'll do that by being inquiry-based, as well as developing frameworks, dashboards, et cetera, to help us accelerate improvement. And when we find that we are doing well, we want to capitalize and build on those processes and procedures. And so long-term practices to sustain and scale best practices when we achieve desired results. Next slide, please. Okay, and so we talked a little bit about stakeholder engagement. I won't belay this point here, but we'll see that, we're talking about this here this evening at the board meeting. Well, come January, we will be in the community with a series of events leading from January until the end of the school year to engage stakeholders. And this is not an exhaustive list of stakeholders to be engaged, but it's a representative list. I do want to uplift, and I know that, dear to Dr. Fisher's heart, is really getting towards the high school. We had an opportunity to engage a lot of folks last year, but we will be heavily involved at the high school to get input and feedback through the stakeholder engagement process, as well as some of our internal stakeholders that we didn't get a chance last year to be able to interact and to engage. And with that said, I'll pass it over to Superintendent Stevens, who will be talking a little bit about our design and build process.
Thanks so much, Mr. O'Gwynn. So important message here is that we are not waiting to start building. We do have work to be able to sort of review research, to go through all of these past, these past efforts, and to build a new framework. We want a solid intellectual foundation for the work that we want to lay for the coming years. But we're not waiting. We're actually beginning programs as we do all of this work. So let's take a look at what we've got going on now. So we're guided by recommendations from Dr. Robin Fisher, who's been with us for a little bit more than a year. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Fisher so that she can describe a little bit of what she recommended at the end of last year, based on her review of past BUSD efforts and her review of the data we collected from various community engagement efforts. So over to you, Dr. Fisher.
Thank you, Superintendent Stevens, and all that are here. I want to definitely give a congratulations to President Brown and Vice President Babbitt for your new positions and the work that you're going to be doing in the leadership that you will continue to provide to the board. Thank you so much. Now, with respect to the recommendations, it's really important that one of my team members really gave a great analogy that last spring, we really started to plant the seeds of this framework. And what we're seeing this academic year is our harvest. We're really beginning to see all of that hard work of tilling the and cultivating the soil for this work to begin to really take shape. And that's what I think you hear my colleagues talk about beforehand. And these recommendations were really built from doing a deep dive, really trying to understand the past initiatives that Mr. O'Gwynn had mentioned, and really looking at all of the initiatives that are already taking place in the district, and how can we build upon them? And so these four recommendations are built from the LCAP goals and taking the LCAP goals in mind, looking at your because we are coming and are still in a pandemic, your LCP strategies. Looking at the Black Lives Matter Resolution, which again is one of the only in the state of California, really being very intentional about the needs of Black students, scholars, their families, especially within the upheaval that has been in our community most recently in the last couple of years. And then some high-priority budget items, as well as how to phase this in over time. And when we really looked at those four, those five or six kinds of accountability reports, we came up with four recommendations initially to put our arms around. The first being that we utilize approved culturally and linguistically. That's really important, responsive, and relevant. We call that clear in our line of work. Social, emotional, academic development interventions to really address the academic performance of African-American students. And that was mentioned with Associate Superintendent, mentioned the second, first, the Tier One and the Tier Two kinds of resources, what's happening in the classroom. This particular recommendation is going to focus on how do we address what students are receiving in the classroom and what that looks like and means. We're going to be using research-based evidence that says these are the best practices and what that looks like and means, so that we are ensuring professionals that they're using the resources that are used throughout the country. Recommendation number two really is focused on ensuring that school personnel are in place and are appropriately trained, supported, and held accountable for the successful implementation of culturally relevant professional development and pedagogical practices. Again, we saw that earlier, that this framework is leading to professional development that's already taking place. How do we build upon what currently exists? And how much deeper can we go to ensure that, again, Black scholars, their needs are being met in a very intentional way? Our third recommendation, after looking at the accountable reports that exist, is really reviewing and updating the district-wide behavioral policies and practices. We heard in some of our public comment, we've seen across the state and the country what's happening in our school districts. And we want to be thoughtful about whether or not what's happening is going to negatively impact students of color, specifically Black scholars in our schools. And if that's the case, this recommendation is being very thoughtful about what that looks like and means. And then finally, our recommendation number four is really focused on how do we ensure that we promote parent and community partnerships and alliances with our local school sites? Last year, we spent a lot of time in our K-8 schools. I mentioned the last time that I met with you in the spring that I've never seen the kind of engagement from principals, the way that I've seen in Berkeley Unified School District. And we're hoping to get that same type of engagement with principals, with families, as we did K-8 with our high schools. And that's going to be our focus in the spring to ensure that we really get a robust set of resources to continue to see how we implement these recommendations. Dr. Stevens?
Thanks so much, Dr. Fisher. So this is not meant to be an exhaustive representation of the work that's going on earlier in this presentation. Ruben Aurelio showed a slide that talked about the elements of an African-American success framework, Tier One instruction, Tier Two interventions, affinity-based programs, family engagement, and that data dashboard. And here's sort of where we are now. This is not meant to be the finishing point, but as we build this framework and look to invest further, this is sort of an array of the programming that we have. This is design and build. It includes work now for the second year with Goldie Mohammed, who's been working with our K-8 educators, as well as anti-racism work at Berkeley High School, the Literacy Action Plan that very specifically looks to to improve core instruction in the area of literacy, our CCAS vision schools, Umoja, STEM Steps, College Bound, YGB, our work with Dr. Mary Bacon, who is in the district again this week, as well as our principals' learning circles that we're reinstituting for this year, and then the data dashboard, which is now underway, draft and development. So as we sort of talk about design, build, we're writing a framework, we're building out a set of programs and bringing them together over time. This is a very deliberate design decision. We just didn't want to wait for a year or two to get the writing correct before we launch in. So we know that we'll update this. We know that we've got lots of work in front of us, but it's exciting to be doing both at once. And then finally, if I can turn it back over, I think, to you, Ruben, and you can talk a little bit about into with two
Yeah, this is two of our partners here. You can see side by side to Robin Fisher, who is with us here presenting. And of course, we heard from Dr. Willis earlier in public comment with CPA and College Bound. It just shows the timelines of where we're going for this year with It just shows the timelines of where we're going for this year with those two partners. And you can see that the, you know, the STEM steps works, which is provide direct services to students. And that's being provided by our, by Robin Fisher's group and partnership. They're also working closely with their vision schools, ensuring that we are doing some significant changes in our instruction and ensuring that we are not over identifying our students for special education. And then the college bound program, which has launched, it launched in October with informational meetings. We have our next session, which are nine to 12 grade families, especially if our families, African American families are invited to attend. That's this Saturday. It, the location is 2020 Bonnar. It is the theater right here at our district office. It is from 11 to two o'clock and I really encourage our families, if they're listening, please attend, bring, come with your child, your high schooler. It is a program intended for both student and family. It's also important for us to note that this work that we're doing here for African American students is really a model that we are trying to replicate for some of our other targeted student groups, our Latinx students and families. We do have a Latinx resolution that calls for some similar processes to be developed. We are doing significant work. We're going to hear about this actually in the next presentation around our English learners, students and families. The work we are doing around our vision schools really focused on a special education. We're also going to hear a little bit more about some plans when we talk about our budgets a little later around special education. And of course, I see in Dr. Stevens background here, you know, we really are working with our Asian, Asian, American, Pacific Islander community and families as well, to make sure that we're focused on those students too. And with that, Dr. Stevens, I think we've come to the end.
We have, thanks very much to the three of you for your help with this presentation and we look forward to our discussion.
Thank you so much for that phenomenal presentation loaded with so much information. As time permits, we will ask our school board directors to engage in this discussion by asking questions. School board directors, if you have questions, this is the appropriate time to raise your hand to be called on. Director Alper.
Thanks, President Brown. Thank you so much for this presentation, all of you. It's impressive and exciting. And I had a very sort of specific question, which was, well, how does, how does our bridge program fit into this? And, and I guess the like slightly larger version of that is how do our, how do our sort of in-house programs, you know, fit into the framework and how do we decide when we need to go, you know, outside the district? Or, you know, or build up, scale up a program that we're, you know, that our employees are, are running.
It's a, it's a great question, Director Alper. Thanks. So the framework itself is sort of in development. We've got a lot of elements of that framework now completed. For example, Dr. Fisher's completed a review of all those past plans and offered us her analysis. And we've got a lot of information now from almost a year of community engagement. But we still have work in front of us to plug into all of our existing programs. For example, probably conspicuously absent from the list was our own black studies department referenced in one slide, but not in the framework. And we know in this next semester that we've got to pull together these multiple pieces so that we're both incorporating existing programming, but thinking critically about what's the, what missing pieces we've got to fill in in this sort of next iteration of effort, what we hope will be many years sort of abstained effort to impact the achievement of African American students.
Thank you, Vice President Babbitt.
Thank you so much. And just to further answer your question, Director Alper, we are trying to connect most of these programs with the framework that we already have. For example, we've had discussions with the bridge program leaders and the college bound academy. We learned that, for example, the bridge program has a waitlist of 60. So this is where we can provide additional services to people off of that waitlist. And we also learned that the bridge program provides tutoring, which and the college bound program provides parent services, like parent education workshops. So these are ways in which if we could work together, we can really bring a real collaborative model to enhance what we're doing and provide additional specific culturally relevant services to these families. But my questions were actually around the family engagement listening circles. I was, so I have two, don't know if I have time for two right now, but those circles, those listening circles last year were really great. I attended every one of them and I was actually called out by one of the principals to make sure that we kept that work going and that we were able to really take it from the district wide level and implement it at the local levels at each school site. And we did in the last listening circle with templates that we gave to our principals. And so I'm just curious, Dr. Stevens or Ruben, if you've heard of any use of those templates of any more localized parent and family engagement workshops at the various schools in which we could continue to build that model even outside of the district wide listening circle plan.
That's a great question, Vice President Babbitt. Thank you. I'm, I'm not aware specifically of the template being used in schools, although it's a great question and we can go back and find that out for sure. I do know that right now we have a mix of our schools that have their own versions of African American advisory councils. They're called different things right now. They're not under the sort of same umbrella. And we have work to do to sort of build out that, that network of school based structures that builds into a district structure. I'm excited to take on that work. I think that what we learn through the circles is going to inform us. And we've got a great partner in Dr. Fisher, who over the course of this semester is going to help us get closer to that vision.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And then I will look for that follow up. And I also want to know the outcomes of the engagement. You gave us a list of the framework development process. And I guess I could draw the conclusion that this is to support the outcomes for recommendations two and three. But it wasn't explicitly clear what outcomes we are trying to get from these various community engagement meetings.
I might also welcome Dr. Fisher into this conversation because I know you have a real sense as well of what's missing in this framework. Generally, I'll start, but I welcome you in on this too. Generally, what we're looking to do is make sure that as we go through both our own review of the research, that we want to include the insights and perspectives of our community workers as we build out this framework. And that those insights and perspectives should be relevant to tier one core instruction, to tier two interventions, as well as enrichment programming that we may have or need. And then finally, to community, family engagement efforts as well. And while we have a lot in each of those categories, I think there's better questions we could ask over the course of the semester about each one of them. Dr. Fisher, could I, could I welcome you into this? Because I know you're, you're thinking deeply about this.
Sure, absolutely. We're thinking, and again, where sometimes the, the two kind of terms get conflated. One, a listing or learning circle and a focus group and what that looks like and means. And so we want to kind of differentiate between the two. The listening sessions and what we really learned from the K eight was really the big ideas from the principals and the families, how, what were their experiences with, at their school sites for their children and their families? And then an action plan that would be implemented per the template that you mentioned. The outcomes for more like the focus groups where we have, and you saw the list of folks that we're going to be speaking to in the, in the coming weeks, coming months, is really to have them reflect upon what we're noticing in the recommendations. So they will, the outcome is this is what we're thinking, this is what we see from your experience, where you sit, from your lens, what does that look like and mean? So when we're speaking with teachers, that might be in the vision schools and what that looks like. What's your experience with students that may be over identified? And how would one through four recommendation be impacted or implemented as you see it? So we're being, we're being very intentional. The outcomes will be different depending on who we're speaking to and for what purpose. And we will without a doubt provide for every single session, what that agenda looks like, what the intended outcomes are, and then provide a summary of what we've heard and how that then will apply to the, the implementation or the recommendation, furthering that recommendation. So I would say that those outcomes are coming, Vice President Babbitt. Once we have confirmed that these sessions are going to take place, the next piece that you'll see from us is just that, these meetings, what the agendas are, what the intended outcomes are, and then what you can expect as far as a summary of what we heard and what that looks like and needs.
Okay, great. And one more question. I know that we're working on a website tool or some kind of communications tool so that African American families can actually go to one place, find out all of this information. Cause you know, as my colleague Director Vasudev noted, oftentimes parents don't hear about this and then they say, well, how come I didn't know? Or, you know, so can you talk to us a little bit about how we plan on expanding our outreach and access and availability to these opportunities, particularly as we also engage in this involved outreach and focus group meetings as well? Thank you.
Dr. Stevens, would you like for me?
Yeah, this is such a good question and I think it's relevant to nearly every presentation that we're, we're giving this evening. That's both relevant, I think, to this discussion about engaging families in the framework, as well as it is for families to engage in the development of the EO master plan or in any of the parent workshops we have. It's also in fact relevant to the middle school student assignment policies discussion that we'll have soon. We, we know that we've sort of learned a lot in the last, I would say especially 12 months about effective family engagement and we have steps that we still need to take. So we have like a number of events that we've launched over the course of this last year, where we've been able to simultaneously do broad communications through emails and use more targeted tools like remind and use our, our network of OFI family liaisons. Now, not all of our cylinders are firing sort of as well as they need to at the moment. We've got a transition taking place in our OFI team that I think we're feeling. And we've also had a try out some transition taking place in ed services with respect to EL support services. So generally, the plan is to use many modes, to use broad emails, to use remind text based messages to, and to use phone outreach as well. We also know that as we start this next semester of engagement work, whether it's any of these topics, that getting back in person is going to be really critical to sort of engaging community members for whom Zoom simply doesn't work. We saw that, I think, really well in the context of this last round of middle school engagement where we, we did well, but we still have extra steps to take in going back to in-person meetings, I think is the way forward.
And also, Dr. Stevens, under your leadership, we have started to build out a page that would, will be connected to the general Berkeley Unified School District webpage that will have just that Vice President Babbitt. It will have a calendar that any member can go, community member can go and see what's happening at school sites as relates to black and African American student and family engagement, what's happening district wide, what's happening with the framework. So we are framing that as we speak and that is to be as launched as we're hoping as early as we come back from the holiday break. And that will be, you know, updated as often as folks are able to update it. But we'll have the frame for sure with what we've talked about thus far. And it includes the kinds of things that you were speaking about and Dr. Stevens was speaking about. At each school site, you know, what are those groups that already exist? And when do they meet? And what does that look like and mean? When are opportunities like Bridge and CTE and Avid and College Bound and the Black Studies Department? What are their efforts and what that looks like? It'll be all in one place so that we could begin to really see what's happening in the district under this initiative umbrella. So that we're working on that as we speak and again, hope to launch it very soon after the holiday break.
Beautiful. Thank you, Dr. Fisher. You answered my question too. So I will give it over to Director Sinai for a question.
Thank you. And thanks for the presentation. It's got a lot of good, good information in it. And I really want to extend appreciation to Dr. Fisher and Mr. Gwynn for the, your, you know, tenacity, persistence and continuing on with us, you know, and keeping this work moving. I have a couple of questions. One is a quick data question. Will data connected to outreach and the other is an observational question like what you're seeing? The data question is Associate Superintendent Aurelio, you mentioned that the one slide did not include students who identified as two or more races. And I know from various focus groups over the years that there's a lot of students who identify as black, who are two or more races. So when we're doing outreach to families and to the engagement, are we looking at families that have students who have identified as two or more races? And black, black being one of, one of the, one of the two?
Correct. That's, I know that slide didn't indicate it. And that was strictly the way the data was pulled. But yes, when we did the outreach, we are pulling for that as well.
Okay. And updated data dashboards will include that data as well. Great.
Right, right.
So I'm, I'm curious with the tier one, you know, the, the slide around the, you don't have to pull it up, but just like the different tiers. We've all been talking about, and you know, it is on the top of everybody's mind nationally, locally, et cetera, about the socially emotional health of our students. And with a lot of our African American students who, who families really felt the brunt of COVID in ways that we know the data shows is disproportionate with health outcomes and socioeconomic outcomes and the like. I'm curious, as you're doing work, as, as we're designing and building, I didn't see like in tier one socially emotional support. And I'm curious to what you're observing in, in, in schools right now about how our African American students are doing with their social emotional wellbeing? And if you're looking at, at ways to approach and address that, that might, that might be a little different than what you might've been thinking of before, given the circumstances have changed. I'm curious to what you're seeing and experiencing.
I, I can definitely speak to the data that I've seen most recently, which is around student suspensions. And what we've seen is a root, an uptick on African American females actually having a real high, the highest numbers, I think of our student suspensions at this point has come across African American females. That's middle and high school. Dr. Stevens, if you've observed similar as far as some of those sort of high, higher needs that we're seeing.
Yeah, I think you're describing something accurately. There, there is among a relatively small number of students. And we're talking about a dozen or so at the high school, six or so at our middle schools who are in intense crisis. There's just no other way to put it. And for whom really sort of in more intensive intervention is necessary, but a lot of support is necessary. And that's different from, I think, the more generalized trauma that almost every student is feeling. But I think that concentrated in particular ways in the African American community over the course of this pandemic. And for which I will be honest, you know, we don't have an adequate response yet. Not to let ourselves off the hook in any way. But I would not feel comfortable saying to the board this evening that we feel like we've got the right mix in our schools to support students as they're coming out of this pandemic. You know, Mr. Gwynn works daily with our students and I, I wonder if I could welcome him in this because I think you probably got some, some insights that, that a number of us may lack.
I certainly think that I'm still in a pandemic, but we're turning back to school. We see that there's needs. I think the broader question is, is how do we begin to develop systems to support those needs? As Director Sinai says, in terms of tier one. And what I perceive by that is, is that how do we embed those things in a school day? Opposed to something separate happen to happen for students who quote unquote, might be in crises, et cetera. Longfellow, there's a number of things. Of course, you know, you have the Moja program that is there every, every single day. But because they have moved towards an extended school day and have master schedule space in their school day, they're able to weave in more support systems there, right? There's a, Tanisha Watson is, is there doing work with African American Girls in partnership with Aram Lachuba there. But the system and structure of the school site and master day schedule has allows them space to be able to breathe and space to be able to weave those things in to their tier one school day. And part of that could be tier one instruction and support through their advisory curriculum, et cetera. And so I think that that is models and beacons that we can look into in some of our stakeholder engagement sessions to learn how effective has those things been? And other learning opportunities to be able to say, perhaps this is something that can be mapped or considered at other school sites. But I think it's a, a very intuitive question to say, not only is it needed, but where's the space and time within the tier one structure of a school day that these things happen? And I'd be committed to coming back and sharing any insights that I have from Longfellow, which is the site that I spend the most time at.
And maybe, I mean, I, I totally hear Dr. Stevens, what you're saying around the, the group of young women who are in crisis. And chances are the crisis doesn't just erupt, you know, all of a sudden that there are things that build. So if there are, again, kind of in the concept, So if there are, again, kind of in the concept of design build, that we're trying to do this all at once. You know, if there's ways and Dr. Fisher, I don't know, you know, what relationships or connections you have, but if there are ways that. Um there's resources that we can bring in that are, you know, focused around the African American community. Or can, people who can make connections, um whether it be around mental health supports or family supports or things. Um because I think that um while there may be whatever, you know, handful of folks that you said are in major crisis. There's a lot brewing. Um and just what we can do with the resources we've dedicated. To our interventions that are COVID related that we can see if there's ways to kind of make sure we're addressing. Uh the African American experience in our schools.
Appreciate that offer of support. Thank you. Um it's something we're thinking a lot about right now and it's, it's really top of mind.
Notice that that we definitely will, as we're gathering and gleaning. Resources that are available in the community will absolutely address uh the. Social emotional wellbeing of, of students and what that looks like and have a list of resources. You have such an amazing community of folks that can support um Berkeley Unified School District. That we will want to make sure that those are identified and you know where they are and what they are able to do. That'll absolutely be part of the framework, especially within the context of your third recommendation. When we're starting to look at, you know, is it really, are disciplinary practices really taken into consideration when there is crisis and what that looks like and means? And what systems and supports are in place if that's not the case? So uh we are definitely going to be focused on that.
And might I add, um I'd be remiss not to mention this, that uh Dr. Philip Shelley, our Director of Student Services. Um led a, a small thinking uh group in partnership with the city of Berkeley to actually seek additional funding for mental health services to come to, to the district. And so that is potentially a place of not only action for thinking about this, but as well as actual real dollars behind it. To be able to invest in some of those services. And so perhaps if that is coming down a pipeline, we can come back with an update for some of the things that we've been thinking about. About how to approach it. So I'd be remiss and not to, to mention that this evening.
Great, that's great. Thanks so much for bringing that up.
Dr. Vasudev?
Uh yes, I just wanted to thank everyone for your great work on this presentation. And uh Mr. Gwynn, now that you mentioned it, Dr. Shelley's work, it was at the high school level?
It um, we had a working group, so there was constituents throughout, so there were several principals. Uh there were folks from the high school counseling team, et cetera, who were there represented, were given ideas about should it be approached to funding? What are some of the things that we might want to try to include in the uh request proposal?
Yeah, that's great. Uh and the reason I ask is because I recently toured Berkeley High and I had the opportunity to talk to our safety officers and. Our um, you know, um just like what they told me is we definitely need more restorative justice support at the high school level. And so it'd be great if we've already started, you know, that, that high school level research to see what that could look like, what exactly they need support in. And the S R O had also mentioned that too. Officer Mitchell had said that he, he would also welcome that. Um I just wanted to thank everyone for the presentation. I think Director Babbitt nailed it because I was going to ask about outreach. And so I'm really happy to hear that there's going to be a dedicated website because I think that's something that we can. Also mirror for our, our other equity work. I think it's so important because when you have multiple initiatives, it can feel overwhelming for families not to know. You know, who's the point of contact? How old are my children? You know, kind of all the requirements for the different initiatives. So that's really exciting and I'm really glad, uh Ms. Fisher, that you're working on that. Thank you so much for your leadership on that. My question is, and I know that, um you know, when I was in middle school, I went through a program. Uh I went to public middle school in San Francisco called the Early Academic Outreach Program. And it was geared for both, you know, Latino and African American students at, at our school. And it was really empowering for me just to go through this experience together with my classmates. I um, I know that the superintendent has mentioned this and we've heard this in public comment. But there's a couple of interventions that have been mentioned also for Latinx students. So College Bound has been mentioned. Uh STEM Steps, the C S A's work. And I was wondering, uh and I don't know if it's Mr. Gwynn would know or who, or perhaps you, Associate Superintendent Aurelio. How is that outreach being conducted also um to Latinx students and are they part of those programs as well?
I can jump in if you'd like me to, that's. So, so we have been, um as we've been working on outreach for all of these programs, we've been interfacing with a number of different staff members. That includes all of our academic counselors at the high school. We've been working with folks like um Jesse Luxford with the Bridge Program. Um and our recruitment has uh been targeting African American students. Uh but we're also being very explicit that, that what we're really looking to do. Um is support the success of first generation collegegoers, including Latinx students as well. Um if you attend a college um bound meeting, you will see that there's a diverse group of students participating. Um and as Darlene Willis, who spoke earlier, um said, you know, the, the program is really trying to appeal to. Uh and build off the strengths of African American culture. Uh and so we're trying to do both of those things at once and I think that everybody is right now experiencing that as a powerful one. Um and, and so that, that's sort of the, the approach right now is to make sure that everybody knows they're welcome. Um and to think about these programs as targeting particular populations.
That's great. And I guess uh my question is, how are you, are you communicating to? Families in Spanish about these opportunities as well? Like if we do a mirror website, will some programs live on both for both populations?
We'd actually just, uh, uh, Mr. Aurelio and I just had this conversation. Out a parallel webpage.
Yes.
That would list a set of resources for Spanish speaking families and in which the, the link to that page would appear in Spanish on our homepage.
That's wonderful. And so I would say that also if there are programs like when that, that we're also mirroring that information for. Afro-Latinx students that might want to participate as well, right? And so to make sure that we're building off of all of these programs and supporting each other.
Yeah, and I, I would add, it's, it's kind of been said from the beginning of starting the framework is that. Uh the benefit of a framework is, is that once it's developed and once we learn um right, how we can make that work for the district. Then it can be used as a model to develop programming, et cetera, for, for other groups as well. So I think that that's always been the. Uh intent is to, you know, take that framework and then be able to see uh how might we best utilize it across uh the district. And so um very much in, intending to be in partnership there.
Thank you. And it's, and I think also it's really important, Director, to note that. What we're trying to do is with the dashboard specifically is for those programs that already exists like when they like Avid, like E A O P. Because it still exists, right? It's still in Berkeley Unified School District. It still is part of what needs to happen and. There's been outreach that says, and we really need to do outreach to groups of students who are not represented as well as they could be. And in that instance, what we're trying to say is across the district, yes, there are some new partners that have come to the table. But across the district, there are amazing program. We just heard about Bridge, E A O P, Avid, our A P courses. Where are Black children and are they taking advantage of? Are they being outreach to? Are they able to take advantage of what already exists above and beyond what some of these new initiatives look like and what they mean? And these new initiatives too are able to be uh role uh models, if you could say, as far as what outreach looks like and means. So that it can be used across the district. And that's really what the African American initiative is really about. Is how can we ensure that all of the resources that are available to all of our students really get to those that really deserve to have it? And what that looks like and means. So we don't want to focus just on the new partners. We really want to look at how can we ensure that all that Berkeley has to offer is really being reached out to, right? And not just outreach, but reached into um the, these programs so that families know that they exist and they can participate. Uh that's even goes with our school site councils. We're also saying, yes, there should be and could be some specific. Equity based initiatives at school sites, but are Black families participating in school site councils? How do we ensure that there are resources available so that families know that that is a viable pathway? And that we encourage African American families to participate in those structures that already exist. So in our mind, with respect to the initiative, it's a both and with targeted focus on outreach to Black families. That aren't or haven't traditionally participated in some of these programs. So we really do see it as a both and, and we will be cataloging that and providing data throughout this process. So that you really can see what that looks like and means.
Oh, I love that, Ms. Fisher. Thank you so much. I think that's so important because sometimes in our C T E programs, right? Like our, you know, our families of color might not feel that that's for them. And so the fact that we could have STEM Steps. And highlight our C T offerings at the same time, so important. So thank you for highlighting.
Thank you so much, uh Dr. Fisher. You know, oftentimes the experience of our Black children and the needs of our Black African American children in the school district are oftentimes. Or sometimes rather put to the side or sometimes um watered down through uh conversations about. Um inclusivity. And so I appreciate tonight's presentation and all of the attention that went into. Uh taking a holistic approach to educating our Black and African American students. Uh within the district and the focus that continues to remain on that programming and that's intentional and impactful. I wanted to ask questions because I wanted to ask two questions. Um one around uh efforts, especially in our community engagement. Um what, what efforts are there around um attendance and addressing attendance for our Black and African American students? We've heard time and time again that, um you know, kids, students cannot learn if they are not in the seat. Um and so we talked about a lot of our programming and what we can do and offer to students. Um part of tier one instruction or part of the, yeah, the normal school day. And so. And, and I'm so excited and happy about that. How do we address students who are not there to receive those services? How do we engage with the community members who um who are also not there? So um that's question number one. And then my other question, maybe we should not answer that one first and I'll go into my other question.
I know that Dr. Shelley is heavily involved, obviously, with the, the Department of Student Services and he. Um, yeah, I know Ayesha is doing, um sorry, I'm blanking on Ayesha's last name. Help me, Dr. Stevens. Still working on all the names. Yes, thank you. Ms. Lockit um conducts home visits as well. So I know that they're definitely do need the outreach. Um and monitoring of attendance. Um I know he's started the Sardan Sard process as well, really trying to connect resources to families. Um specifically around attendance. Um it's beyond those resources. At this point, I'm not sure which other resources are, are being put forth. Um, Dr. Stevens, or anything I'm, I'm not aware of potentially or anyone else?
Yeah, the, the, the sort of, I, I guess I'll sort of bring it back to the framework development. We do have lots of people who work on attendance. That's true at the high school. That's true across all of our schools. Um and yet we see the data we do. Um and we know that there needs to be thoughtful additions to our current system of intervening in attendance. So that's, I think, part of that, that sort of tier two component of the study process. What more do we need? What's, what's working but what's not? Uh and we want to draw from the insights of families and educators as we think both about what goes into that framework. And ultimately, what we might propose as additions to our, our attendant support systems.
Thank you. Thank you both. Um and then my last question kind of falls on the heels of what Director Vasudev. Uh brought up and also uh Dr. Fisher's response. Um and about making uh this program available, uh or the framework rather, available to. Um a lot of different um subgroups that we have in B U S D. And I wanted to ask questions about um intersectionality. And so we have. The Office of Language and Accusation. Shin um gives a wonderful like synopsis of um a movement around um. English learners who are Black and um I, I, and the language of acquisition in their synopsis identifies them. As uh native born and foreign born um English speakers. And so I wanted to ask what efforts are being done um to support our Black and African American students or to. Identify our Black and African American students who will also, who could potentially also fall in this English learner subgroup. And um, you know, what efforts are being done to first identify them, to engage the community around them. Um and to include them in the framework, if you all don't mind responding.
Dr. Fisher, would you be willing to lead us off on this conversation? This, this is itself, I think, an entire, an entire topic. On linguistic response of curriculum and thinking about sort of standard English um language. I, I know you, you are something of an expert in this area. Would you be willing to, to lead us off on this?
Well, thank you. I don't know about being an expert, but I definitely know that when we talk about being clear. And that's the acronym that we use in the work that we do and that when you look at, usually folks are looking at something being culturally relevant. And not necessarily linguistically relevant too, at the same time. Uh that's really important. And so in this work. When we start talking about tier one or tier two interventions and we talk about what that looks like and means for Black children, the continuum, all Black children, right? And where they lie on this continuum of intervention from media remediation to acceleration and what that looks like. We don't usually include language development and what that looks like in that conversation. And so with this dashboard that's being developed on behalf of the district, we would be able to identify. What that looks like and means from a linguistic perspective. And we would be able to see, because when we talk about language development or multilingual students, which they are superheroes, right? They have more than one language. They, they, they're superheroes. Uh who, who can do that? They do and they can. And we know that there are multiple languages that fall with under uh this idea of English language learners and what that looks like and means. And so again, when we identify, very similar to what the Associate Superintendent said. With respect to who is identifying as Black or African American. What does that look like within the context of the languages that they speak and what that means? And how that impacts what happens in the classroom and outside of the classroom? That's what we're hoping this framework will be able to give us more information about and to be able to speak about it as you're asking. You know, I don't know yet, but we're gathering that data and the dashboard will able, be able to give us information, hopefully. Uh pretty quickly to identify, well, who's in the space? What do they need? How best do we support them? What does that look like? Right now, we don't have that uh fluency to be able to do that. Um and that's what we're hoping with the framework under the initiative to be able to do. So that is very much part of the research that's going into when Dr. Stevens wants to know. Well, what are those research based practices? What is the evidence? What does the research tell us? We're at that stage now where we're starting to gather that and be able to make recommendations based on that intersectionality that you're mentioning. So not an expert, but we're definitely uh have that in our wheelhouse as far as thinking about what that looks like and means, President Brown.
Thank you so much, Dr. Fisher. Thank you for your work. Thank you, Mr. Gwynn, for your work and your presentation this evening. As well as Associate Superintendent um Ruben and Superintendent Stevens. Thank you all so much for this phenomenal presentation and for being here this late into the evening. We will now move on your, your, you know, except for you, Superintendent Stevens and Associate Superintendent.
President Brown, come on.
But. May, maybe next time. Thank you, Dr. Fisher. Thank you, Kamar. Uh now, uh Superintendent Stevens, you have one more thing to do, actually three, four more things to do. So the next thing you'll do is uh help us with the presentation on the update, the multilingual learner master plan. And the English learner family engagement.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm actually going to pass the, the baton right over to our Associate Superintendent Ruben Aurelio.
And shortly after that, I will be introducing and passing the baton to our director, Lisa Stupin, who's been waiting in the wings to do this presentation. We do have an update for you all on our multi-lingual master plan. Um this is a partnership with CABE. Um and you'll be hearing about that as well as our partnership with PK and a few other opportunities. So Director Stupin, the forward source.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Um again, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Lisa Estepin and I'm the Director of the Categorical and Special Projects Department. Um so tonight I would like to provide you with an update um on the multilingual master plan, Project to Inspire and PK. Which is the parent institute for quality education. Perfect, next slide. All right. So the first thing that I'd like to talk about is the CABE work that we're doing on the multilingual, multilingual master plan development. Um so as you can see on the slide, the first P D work session occurred yesterday from eight thirty to two thirty in the afternoon. Um feedback from CABE staff and members of the multilingual leadership team were all positive. It was a long day, but um a lot of the work that was put into that, that day was really, really meaningful. Um some of the feedback that I received um from the members of the leadership team as well as CABE staff. So members of the team stated like um every minute spent was beneficial and much needed. I'm thankful to be part of this team doing the work for our English learners. I'm glad this is finally happening. Um and one ask was that in addition to the P D um work that CABE was doing. They were asking for additional work time so that um the team could collaborate and really dive into the um multilingual plan. Um after meeting with CABE, CABE did agree to that and moving forward, um that time is also going to be built into these sessions that are going to be occurring. Um I also met with CABE staff today and they stated to me um the reflection about what happened yesterday. Um they stated that every single member was super engaged and just super knowledgeable and, and. Really well versed about our English learners. Um they stated to me that with all the breakout sessions that we had. Um when they popped into the breakout rooms, all of the conversation. They stated to me that with all the breakout sessions that we had, um when they popped into the breakout rooms, all of the conversations were super rich and everybody was engaged. Um so very positive day yesterday in regards to the work behind the multilingual master plan. Moving forward, um there are already um four additional dates scheduled, two in January and two in February. Um so so for now, that's the update on the multilingual master plan. We will be continuing to meet. The team collaboratively collaboratively is going to decide whether we will continue meeting twice a month after February. Um we all believe that that's what's going to happen, but collectively, that's what's going to happen. The team together will decide that. But at minimum, it will be once a month.
Could I, could I jump in and 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 maybe for folks who just aren't familiar with that acronym CAPE? Could you help us know what that means and who who those folks are?
Of course. So CAPE stands for California Association for Bilingual Bilingual Education. So so truly, CAPE is an organization that really truly supports the engagement, the learn learning, um you know, professional development for for teachers, for all kinds of staff, not just teachers, on supporting our English learners um as they navigate through our school system. Thanks. And then moving on, in regards to the data survey meeting, um I met today with CAPE staff in addition to um including our Brea Director Ruth Steele in regards to some um um survey that, a a survey that we want to put forth in regards to the um multilingual master plan. Um today at the meeting, we kind of went over the why. What is the why of the survey? And what was established is that um we really want to focus on the area of needs for our English learners as well as the level of satisfaction that our students, our parents, our staff are are feeling toward um EL programs already in place. So that's kind of the base of where the survey is going to kind of go to. Um we also finalized the plan and a timeline for the rollout. Um what's going to happen is I'm I'm going to be working with great, the Brea team to create a draft survey. We will then again meet with CAPE so that they can look at the survey, um you know, and kind of give us their feedback. Um after that, we are going to bring the survey to the multilingual leadership team in at our, one of our January meetings for their feedback as well as to finalize the survey. And the plan is to roll out the survey to parents, staff, students, community members in February and March. And um the reason for the surveys, obviously, again, we want to address the areas of need and then figure out like what everyone's thought is about what is occurring for our English learners in our district now. Um the last thing I want to talk about in regards to the multilingual master plan is CAPE will be presenting updates at two D-LAC meetings. Um the plan is obviously to invite the D-LAC members, but in addition, we want to do outreach and invite um a broader audience um that would like to um gain information, ask questions about the multilingual plan, ask questions of um from CAPE if they they need additional information. Um and so those two um D-LAC meetings that we've planned for um CAPE to present um will be February twenty second, twenty twenty-two, and then April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Um so, next slide. Um the next thing I want to talk about, again, in conjunction with CAPE, um they also have a parent engagement portion, which is titled Project to Inspire. Um so the first session was yesterday evening. And just to go over um the outreach, the outreach for the initial meeting, which was yesterday, um I'm kind of working on a skeleton staff. Typically, I have a staff member that is really, really tied into our EL families and and but luckily, I've been able to tap into our ELD teachers who who do have um many positive relationships with um EL families on site. And so the request was for principals and ELD teachers to make personal um invitations for family, for parents to come and join the first um Project to Inspire session, which was last night from six to seven thirty. Um and so that was the outreach for this initial meeting. Um prior to that, um CAPE and myself and um some ELD staff met and we tried to come up with a plan of how we're going to engage our parents to come to this first meeting. And so CAPE said, okay, let's 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 do personal outreach this way and and then from there, we'll we'll obviously broaden our outreach and see what happens um last night. So with that, moving forward, um what we've kind of talked about is for the outreach for the meetings, because they will be occurring every week between now and the end of May. Um we're going to continue the personal invitations from principals and ELD teachers. Um we also now um are going to include OFI staff to support the parent outreach. Um and then on top of that, we will continue to solicit at D-LAC and then on, and then from D-LAC, we would ask staff members as well as um D-LAC members to go back and solicit for for parents to come and join our project to inspire um through our ELAC as well. Um what else do I want to add about Project to Inspire? Um some things that I really want to talk about is being part of that Project to Inspire session last night. I personally was moved. Um the parents that were actually there last night, um they they really were inspiring. Um they shared many personal experiences about like not wanting their child to to receive EL services because of misinformation or some kind of stigma that they were feeling. But through last night's meeting, we were able to, you know, utilize the presentation that that CAPE was um presenting to our families and then truly talk about and have positive conversations. And I feel really then in turn empowered our families to kind of understand more that, you know, the services that we're providing are to help our students, to support our families. Um and then I think the one moving part for me was last night at the end of the um meeting, the facilitator asked all the parents there, you know, just kind of state one word after tonight, how you are feeling. And some of the words that some of the parents shared were community, support, very emotional. Um and so to me, it just really made me feel empowered that these parents took the time. It was a long night. You know, we ended close to eight o'clock last night and they were still there hanging on and the positivity that I felt that came from that meeting last night really just kind of made me wake up this morning and say, hey, this is, this is, this is great and we can only do better from here. So it was, yesterday was a long day with the um, you know, the CAPE master plan work and then the evening. But it was overall, I feel, just a very powerful, engaging day um in support of our English learners. Um so next slide.
So ju- just to add, uh Director Stupin, we are still seeking families to join.
Yes, absolutely. Um and that's where I kind of talked about the outreach that, you know, we're still going to continue with the um, you know, the ELD teachers doing personal invites as well as the principals. And then we're infusing OFI staff, um obviously D-LAC, you know, outreach through emails, all of that, we're still going to continue to do.
Do we, do we have a date for the next meeting?
Yes, it's next week. It's every week. So the fourteenth will be the next one and then we'll we'll come back in January. So yes. And I do want to add um the plus of that, we did have some staff attend last night too. And they're they're, the the sessions are presented in Spanish, but then the Zoom channel is being utilized so that the presentation is also provided in English. So that was very beneficial last night as well. Okay, switching gears, now we're going to talk about PK, which is Parent Institute for Quality Education. So what we've established is now we are going to have two cohorts. The first cohort is set to begin February twenty twenty-two, which includes the school sites of Sylvia Mendez, Thousand Oaks, and then Longfellow and MLK. So um as you see on the slide, their sessions are set to begin on February sixteenth. Um the second cohort is set to begin on March twenty-second and includes the sites of Rosa Parks, Malcolm X, and then Berkeley High and Ber- Berkeley Tech. Um and that, they're, like I said, beginning on March tenth. All sessions are eight weeks long. Um and then at the end, they do have a graduation celebration that that um that uh PK um infuses for them. Um so what has been done since, I've already made the introductions with PK staff that's supporting the district with all of the this um site administrators um within the the two cohorts. Um what is really beneficial is many of the um principals for these um sites that we're infusing PK into um have had experience with PK and have provided me as well as with PK um very positive feedback. Um some of them have also shared already um thoughts on how to outreach families um to be a part, to participate in PK via their OFI staff, parent meetings, committees. Um so that feedback right there also made me feel very hopeful about what's to come in the new year. Um in addition to that, I've also been meeting with PK um and they have advocated, they've stated to me that they advocate for their staff to make personal outreach calls to all of the Latinx families at the cohort sites. And the reason why they share that and they they like to, they like to do so is because they feel that making those personal phone calls, they're able to answer any questions as well as um, you know, present what PK genuinely is from their perspective since they are the presenters. But in addition to that, um you know, we're still going to, obviously, as a district and as school sites, still do outreach to parents via, you know, meetings, via personal invitations. So that on top of the personal phone calls that PK is going to make, I'm really, really excited about what's to come in the near. And I believe that is all of my updates for now.
Thank you so much, Director Stupin, for your fabulous presentation. We are going to take questions now from board directors and we will start with Director Vasudev.
Well, thank you so much, Director Stupin, for your presentation. I am, yeah, I know that CAPE is extremely well-respected. While I was at CSBA, I got to meet um other board director colleagues from different districts that have been working with CAPE. CAPE representatives were there at CSBA last week. So it was really wonderful to meet them and I know that many districts have expressed what wonderful work they do. And I know that this is a huge investment, just from my board colleagues, a hundred thousand dollars that we're investing in this work. Um and for that, and because it's so much, right, I'm very passionate about us doing it right and making sure that the families that need this work have access to it. And so I, with that spirit, I hope you'll take my comments. Um first off, I'm excited by what's happening in the personal, in the PD sessions for the master plan. I think that work's been going really well. My concerns are that there's no external report back to to our EL community about what's happening internally. A lot of those meetings are during the day and parents need to meet at night, right? And so um there's a, there's not a match there with our educators needing to meet during the day and and the families, you know, being available at night. And so I know that um my first question is going to be about how are we reporting out to the community? What's happening in those PD sessions that are so important? And I agree with the structure and I agree that our educators need that time to work out very specific um things, right? And so I, but the report back to the community. So that's my comment on the P, my, the PD sessions. With regard to, should I take them my part or should I just go for all of them?
Do you want me to just answer that one first? No worries, no worries, no worries at all. So just to address that part, um you know, I did meet with CAPE and let them know that there was a little bit of, there was disconnect with what, you know, the positive work that's going on with our staff. Although, you know, D-LAC members are, and there's actually two D-LAC members that are a part of the leadership team and an additional two, two parents that are there, but then again, the difficulty because it's such a long time during the day, they oftentimes just pop in for a quick moment and then they obviously have to leave because they have other, other um responsibilities. So what what I did is I actually, you know, talked with the CAPE staff and I said, you know, there's a disconnect. You know, the work that's going on in these PD sessions are amazing for the staff because we see what's happening and the movement is happening. But of course, our families want to know what's happening. And, you know, as I have learned, our D-LAC families especially that are there, they're so engaged. And you were there, um Director Vasudev, at the last meeting, you know that they're, they're there for our our students. And um with that being said, um I I tried to ask CAPE, how can we bridge this gap, you know? And so they have presented at at our our D-LAC meetings, but we do know that we have to have a larger audience. And that's why in the presentation, I I shared that um we would like to do two presentations at D-LAC and invite a larger population, not just the D-LAC members, but really open up those two meetings to whomever would like to attend. And that is where CAPE is going to do presentations as to the work that's being done. And the reason why they that they chose February and April is because by then, more work would have been done on the master plan by February. And then by April, we'll be kind of nearing the end, where, you know, we'll be heading toward the board presentation and the final, final project, product of the multilingual master plan. So that is the hope that, you know, in those two sessions, and if needed, if there's more needed presentations or, you know, any kind of platform, they're willing to support us because we're partnering in this work. And so those are the two, because obviously we know how engaged D-LAC is. And then D-LAC can also in turn invite their ELAC members and then they can all come to the meeting and whoever, community members, whoever else would like to come.
Yes, Mrs. Stupin, I'm, I'm not so much concerned about the number of sessions. I'm really concerned about the outreach. Because that's what I'm hearing from families. We don't know this is happening. I'm hearing from community groups, a sense of frustration that they don't know that this work is happening. And so might I suggest, I like the website idea that Director Babett, uh Vice President Babett uh had, I had, um, you know, mentioned in the previous presentation. I think that that's important, but also paper copies. Paper copies to our multilingual families, paper copies to our newcomer program, paper copies to every single ELAC group, flyers. I mean, old school outreach, I think that's what's going to work for this. And I think um that would go a long way. So I would like to see flyers for these two sessions. And I don't necessarily think you need to add a whole lot of sessions. I just think the outreach needs to be much better. And I acknowledge what, and I hear you loud and clear, that you're missing staff. I know that. And I know the role that our TSA played in this work. It was so vital and I know uh what she meant to our families. And so I acknowledge that. But I think that that the outreach has to be a lot stronger and a lot better. I don't necessarily think you need to add an additional number of sessions. And then my concerns about Project to Inspire is that last night, you know, there were, what I, the report back that I got was that there were five people at the meeting and one educator. I don't know if your numbers are a little different, but what said on the presentation was the presentation could be for twenty-five or forty parents. Again, we're seeing that, you know, like the outreach could be a lot better so that those families know. And if we have a presentation happening next week, that flyer's got to be ready stat. And so that's something that's really concerning to me, or else we postpone it, right? Like if we can't get the outreach right, then postpone it so that the meeting is fruitful. So for me, that's, that's what's producing a sense of urgency. And I think I'm really excited about PK. I'm very excited that we, and I don't know if the rest of my board colleagues know this, but PK wanted to just work at one site and in the original proposal and our wonderful BUSD staff got them to combine to two sites. So I'm very appreciative of the work, of your work, Director Stupin, and your work, Associate Superintendent Orellio and Superintendent to make that happen. Um but I'm also concerned, I'm telling you guys, I'm really concerned about the outreach for that too. And I think I would love to see the targeted outreach. And I think for all of these different interventions that we're spending a lot of money on, right? It's, it's very sad and disheartening for me when, you know, twenty-three percent of our district is Latinx and a lot of families don't know about it. And they come to me looking for information. So I think the beginning of the year, it'd be great to have a website and paper copies to all our targeted groups with flyers about these different events that are happening. But I think a website delineating what's happening, key dates, calendar, um would be great and go a long way. Thank you.
No, no worries. And I want to add though, that what's really funny, not funny, but ironic is that um Ruth, the Director of Brea, and I just talked about the website on the flip side in regards to the Latinx stuff. So we just literally met about it today and she and I were going over what I wanted on it and um next steps for that. So then now here we are talking about it and I I appreciate your comments and I I I, I'm on board with you.
Yeah, know that they come from a good place and that I know, I know your staffing constraints. Um but because it's such a large investment that the board made, that our district made, I want it to be done right. So.
Obviously, I I agree with you.
Thank you, Director Vasudev, for those comments. Vice President, uh Director, Vice President, Director Babett. It's nine thirty and I'm feeling all of nine thirty, Vice President Babett.
Uh thank you so much and thank you, uh Liza Stupin, for that wonderful presentation and for all of the hard work that you're really putting into um making this program a success in BUSD. We do appreciate the hard works and the efforts. And as um someone who's done parent outreach work, I know it is extremely difficult. And so I appreciate that you put in there having multiple opportunities with the every week. I think that's great. So people can know when to plan and they can drop in and they have, they don't feel like they missed their one shot. Um so I really um appreciate that recognition. My questions were around um uh the PK program as well. Um I was able to attend PK when my middle daughter was at Rosa Parks and she's now a freshman in college. So I do know um the value of those sessions. Um and it was, you know, clearly engaged around creating parent leaders. Um and so my question is, how are we going to engage our OFI staff in those sessions? Um so that they can actually learn from that work and build from that work. And and I will say that our OFI staff has done phenomenal presentations on their own outside of PK um at even kind of greater levels. So I feel like it could help um refine the work that they're doing, help establish and help grow. But the long-term plan should be in our investment in our family engagement and equity office that we are able to do these things in-house. Um so can you tell me um what that looks like in, as you plan this out and how we're going to incorporate that? And then lastly, um as someone who helps uh with our um LCAP plan, you, you know, some of those funds are brought into the district specifically for our English language learners. And we were very intentional many years ago about making sure that we got down to the thirty minutes a day guaranteed service uh to our English language learner families. And, sorry, I'm tapping. And in the first few years, when that happened, um we saw the data, like we saw the reclassifications. We saw the improvements. We saw the conversation begin to focus on how we make sure we're supporting more around after reclassification. And so I just really don't want to. And so I just really don't want to lose sight of the things in our past master plan and the things that we've invested in that we already know work. And so are we able in our current programming, now that we're back in person, to, to really return to that 30 minute a day goal?
Sure. So I, I'm going to try to address the first one about the OFI staff. I'm going to be very transparent with you, you know, we're still in the, you know, we, we just finished scheduling everything out and connecting with our principals. So for myself, you know, infusing OFI staff in there is something that I think is an amazing idea. Something that I personally hadn't thought about, but I think that that's an amazing idea and something that we can pose to the OFI staff moving forward. So thank you for that and then maybe.
I want to add that one of the cohorts for PK, the initial cohorts is Mendez and Thousand Oaks. That's a, two schools that have been without their OFI liaison. But we just, at least fingers crossed, I'm going to look at my, my colleague Tobias Espinoza paperwork that we've selected are higher for that position. So we're really hoping we, that, that person starts soon. So those schools will be with their liaison, who's Spanish bilingual, will be able to do a lot of that outreach. And, and I, I think we've talked about some of these other OFI positions as well and so we have plans for that too. So we definitely, it's, it's a department that is a bit depleted as well. We're still waiting to land our Director of, of OFI and bring her on board. And that would be phenomenal to include them all in this work.
Agree. Um, and then in regards to like the work in regards to reclassification and monitoring our students. Again, um, as Director Vasud stated, I am a little bit short-staffed, but what has been really amazing is we have got some ELD teacher leader, teacher, um, teachers that have been really stepping up to the plate. We've been able to continue to have, um, I think it's twice a month, we meet with our ELD teachers. And so I have one of the TSA's in Brea that's actually used to be an ELD teacher that has been so integral because she's stepped up and has been helping me a lot with this work. So we, we've been continuing to have the meetings with our ELD, um, teachers to continue the work in regards to reclassification. So right now we are reclassifying students based on, um, you know, some assessments that we were able to, to conduct at the end of last year. Of course, we didn't, we weren't, because of the pandemic, we weren't able to do it rigorously. But we have been able to reclassify students and I know that for a fact because I've been signing the sheets and looking over those. So we have been reclassifying our students. And then on top of that, yes, um, the ELD teachers have been, um, pulling out the kids to do, you know, not, I don't, have been implementing the 30 minutes a day to, to support the students. So I know that that's been happening, um, continuing to do the work always. And I think that the meetings that are occurring are really helping our ELD teachers kind of like guide them on what to do in regards to compliance, in regards to the support that they need to provide the students. So the work is happening.
Director Sinai?
Thank you. And, um, Director Stupin, thank you for all your work. It sounds like you've got quite your hands full, uh, given your, your staffing challenges. So I appreciate that. I have a couple of questions, one kind of following a little bit on Vice President Babbitt with the master plan. When I, when I saw the, the schedule of the sequence, from the first meeting to the surveys, I was curious whether there is an analysis of the existing plan and what's working. Cause it, I mean, it's one thing that here's what's in the plan and then to, to just do surveys to get, you know, kind of general feedback. Is there going to be a data, um, a data-driven approach to what exists? And what improvements need to be made? So that was my first question.
Sure. Um, so we did actually discuss that as well. And so part of what, if you look at the, um, the, the MOU that we have with CAVE, there's also an interview portion in there. And so we discussed like, how have you done this in other districts? And so the interview process is, is really important in regards to the work behind the master plan. So if we were to just go into a meeting and say, or go into a parent meeting, right? And part of what they were thinking of using as a platform is the project to inspire later, a few, you know, a few more sessions down the line when we have a more robust group, as well as going into the school sites, whether it's an ELAC, whether it's a D-LAC, whether it's another parent meeting. Um, and then first, obviously, you know, making sure whoever's there is educated prior to like, what is in the current older master plan, right? And then, and then asking in an interview, because doing a survey for parents like that, I know, another feedback that I received is some of our parents are feeling fatigued, um, in regards to, you know, surveys and questions and that stuff. So maybe an interview process might be a better place to approach and allowing them to speak and, and, and share their thoughts. So that's the approach we want to take in regards to that is first step would be to educate our families, what's in this plan? You know, it's, it's very hefty, it's a thick document. And so really pulling apart the pieces that directly impact the students and then educating them on that and then interviewing them and saying, do you see this happening? Do you see this working? You know, what, what do you need? Instead of just a simple survey, but really educating in them and allowing them to, to share, you know, what, what they're thinking about what's happening.
Right, so doing an interview or doing a survey, you're going to get qualitative information about how they feel about something and how they perceive something. Is Brea or anyone doing baseline data analysis of what actual results we got from the different interventions or programs that we did? That, because that, I mean, we dealt with this a lot in the pack. It's like you start new each time without evaluating what programs have we been doing for the last five or 10 years? And have they had any impact? So I'm, that's what I'm asking is like, I, I get the survey and the interviewing part. I want to know what the data foundation is that we're going to springboard from.
Director, Director Sane, those are great questions and definitely we will put that on the to-do list with this work. We want to make sure we're examining the data and past practice to see if those results were, were coming true or not.
Okay, so, so it's not in there now, but you'll look at incorporating that. Okay. Thanks, I'd love to hear back, you know, like some of the information. I think also, so my second question has to do with the project to inspire. Um, one is a clarifying question, so I'm not sure I understand the weekly sessions on, are you trying to get to a stable group or is it like open session that anybody can come in and come out?
They want a really, they want a stable group of up to 40 parents to continuously come every week. Because basically it, it complements the work that's happening in the, um, leadership team for the multilingual master plan. So for example, like in one of the sessions in the, um, leadership team, where they're presenting on the EL roadmap. So that's a pretty, you know, intense session that we're going to be exposed to. And then we want to also mirror that and, um, also teach our parents, what is the EL roadmap in, in a way that they can understand? So it complements each other. And, and the plan is to have the same, same parents come as often as possible.
So it's weekly though? That's a lot.
It is.
So that leads to my next question. And there might be a variety of you who can answer this. What's the difference or what's the value-add difference between the CAVE and the PK? And what's the difference in the sense of the target population?
Meaning the parent group, right?
Yeah, because I think we're recruiting a lot of, and I think we talked about this when we allocated the money as well. It's like we're, we're recruiting a lot of parent engagement activities. And I just, I'm wondering, are, does, does the CAVE and the PK overlap in time period? Are they similar people who are, uh, you know, I, part of it is just the time it takes to recruit. And so, but I also, I just don't understand the objectives of the CAVE one and the objectives of the PK? And are they significantly different?
So PK really, oh, go ahead, Ruben.
Well, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that PK, the targeted group for PK is, is, was under the guise of the Latinx resolution that were really focused on Latinx, not just EL. And the way PK works and, uh, Director Vasud mentioned this earlier about the getting two schools versus one, they really tried to tailor it to the school and the vision of school and really partnering with the school. So it's very tailored versus the project to inspire is district-wide. It's a district-wide project and focus more predominantly more on the EL learners. So that, that's the distinction I make at least between the two.
Can I, I, I'd like to also add, PK, uh, really what their drive is, is to empower, um, our parents to support their kids to getting to college or, you know, that, that route. And whereas the EL master plan work with Project To Inspire is, is trying to get parent leaders to understand how they can be better supportive of the school district, um, put the, you know, um, and, and what's the word I'm looking for? Be part, active participants in their children's education and to, to really understand the intricacies of, of what, um, the compliance, for example, the compliance over ELs, the testing, um, the reclassification, the monitoring. That's really what they focus on, like, um, Assistant Superintendent Aurelia said, the overall, like, we're not focusing on just Latinx, it's all of the ELs, whether, it doesn't matter what language, you know.
And our, our principals, so if, if part of the recruitment is being done at the site level, do principals understand who they're recruiting for what?
That's a good question. You know, I, I have, you know, tried to communicate as well, they ask questions. Debbie Dean is also, you know, a big advocate, so maybe a little bit more clarification may be needed. So I, I agree with you and I hear you, but yes.
I, I really wasn't making a judgment, it really was a question.
Not at all.
If I'm confused, I wonder, you know, thank you, thank you so much.
No worries, there is a lot going on.
Director Vasudev?
All right, just had, really quickly, I agree with, uh, Director Sinai. That's why I think the website would be so clear to, so that people understand what's the objective behind the two different forms of engagement. And also we want to make sure that when we're recruiting our families for EL work, that we're also recruiting our Arabic-speaking families. You know, that information is multilingual for the broader EL population. And so, um, I want to make sure that that's happening to them. When we're doing community engagement, we're really being intentional, focused, that those flyers are translated. I know it's a lot of upfront work, but when you do it right, you get the right people in the room. And I think that's, that's so much more rewarding.
And I, I will say, I, I envision a, a series of Venn diagrams because there's so much overlap in a lot of these different groups, right? That there's pieces in the middle that you can hit all the different groups.
Are there any other questions from school board directors? Now, seeing that there aren't any, thank you so much, Director Stupin, for, um, your wonderful presentation and especially for that last part, um, the attention that you gave to us in regards to the difference between PK and also the project to inspire. So thank you so much for being here late in this evening, you may go home. And, and thank you for your presentation and for your ongoing work. We know that you do a lot of work in the district and this is just a, a portion of it. So thank you, uh, for your commitment to, to our school district.
Thank you, congratulations.
President Alford never let people go home.
Well, he's not president anymore, not just kidding.
I do want to, she, she's a trooper. If you notice her hand there, she just broke her hand this weekend. So she is a trooper, she is working with a broken hand.
Oh no, we'll get some rest and, and heal.
Congratulations again, everybody.
Thank you, thank you so much. Uh, we will move on to item 13.3, an update on community engagement about the middle school, uh, student assignment, uh, policy. And as we, oh, Ms. Smith is already here. Uh, Director Stevens, Dr. Stevens, do you want to introduce Mr.?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, thanks so much, President Brown, and welcome to you, Stacy Smith. The theme of this evening's presentations is most certainly community engagement and the value of drawing input from our families, um, here in Berkeley. We've been engaged in a, a sort of sustained conversation with the Berkeley community for better than a year now about our middle school student assignment policy. Uh, in order to sustain that engagement, make sure that it's deep and robust, um, we've solicited the help of Stacy Smith, a local consultant who has been helping us both design an engagement process and run that engagement process. We're just finishing what we think of as a second phase of that engagement, a first phase that took place in the last academic year. The second phase, just wrapping up as we sort of complete this semester. Uh, and then we imagine designing additional phases as well as we, um, sort of march towards a potential decision in November of 2022 uh, about the, the middle school student assignment policy. So, uh, Ms. Smith, welcome to you, I'm glad you're here this evening.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Directors, for having me back, um, to speak with you this evening. I know it's been a long evening already and you have more to cover tonight. So if anybody wants to get up, move around, turn off your camera and dance around a little, that's fine, I will not be offended at all. And I will, um, try to keep this as concise as possible. As Director Stevens said, the middle school enrollment policy review is expected to run through November 2022. And for those who are watching, just a reminder that at that time, the board may decide to keep the current policy or make, adopt an alternative. If there is a new alternative, that will not take place until 2023, 24. And this year's fourth graders would be the first cohort to enroll in middle school under that new policy. This fall, we had the opportunity to speak with families, principals and other administrators, educators, school staff, the school secretaries, um, in a variety of settings, both large and small, um, in both Spanish and English. We, um, had two surveys in November. Um, and in addition to, uh, the presentation this evening, uh, there will be a more detailed report to the superintendent before the end of this month. We promoted our activities through multiple channels. Some were targeted specifically, some were community-wide, like the, um, uh, A-plus news. We took advantage of partner, partnership with PTA Council to get the word out to families, um, social media. And also targeted, uh, for example, the remind system was used exclusively for Spanish-speaking families to both alert them to, uh, to opportunities to engage and also send links and remind them that something's happening. I want to thank all the partners, um, who helped us with all of this. And I especially want to call out, um, uh, admissions manager Francisco Martinez, who partnered with me and attended all of these events and lent his expertise, um, on enrollment and the alternatives. And also, uh, communications director Trish McDermott and Jessica Lopez, Teo, excuse me, the, um, executive assistant to the superintendent, both of whom really made all this outreach possible. What I hope that you gain from this slide is both the variety of ways that folks engage with us this fall, but also the magnitude of the level of engagement. Some folks came to events, um, some folks watched, that, for example, the town halls on YouTube after the fact. The, uh, we had almost 1,700 visitors to the dedicated webpage that we have on the BUSD website. And on that page, we have been, um, keeping that current with, uh, dates and links to meetings. There were links to the surveys, uh, slides from the meetings have been up there, links to the YouTube videos of the town halls have been up there. Um, and we're trying to keep that, um, keep that, uh, updated regularly for folks, so as a resource to the community. Um, we engaged, we spoke with a lot of families. We did not ask all of our families to share information about their students, but we did ask folks who attended the town hall to, to, uh, to let us know, um, you know, a little bit about them and their students. Here's an overview of what we heard from folks who, who shared. We heard from folk, families of ELL students, special education students and families with students of every race, ethnicity, except for native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander. Our families that attended the town hall also primarily spoke English, but also Spanish and Arabic at home. We did also ask folks who took the family survey that went out to TK through eighth grade families to share information about their students. And, um, the first thing I'd like to say is the survey was, um, uh, there were a lot of responses. We had a 25% response rate, it was an excellent response to the survey. We did not hear, looking at these demographics, let me tell you what you're looking at, the number of families who responded, then the corresponding number of students they represented. The yellow, uh, the yellow column is the proportion of students of each, each race, ethnicity for the survey. And then the final column is for TK through eighth grade families, excuse me, for the district overall. You can see that we, we would have liked to hear from more, uh, families of students who are Black or African-American and Latinx and Hispanic. One of the things I would like to also highlight though is we heard from many more families of multiracial students who, um, identified their students as two or more races, twice, um, what we expected. And also 18% of families just chose not to share that information with us. We also asked other questions about language, um, whether or not a student was ELL. Again, we would have liked to have heard some more from these families, which is why I'm just thrilled that we were able to attend the most recent D-LAC meeting. And I'm, I'm excited about the engagement initiatives that were being discussed this evening as well. The great news about the survey in particular is that we had a very high. Um, the great news about the survey in particular is that we had a very high response rate from elementary school TK through fifth grade families, particularly second, third and fourth grade families who will um be the first cohorts to experience any change in policy if there is a change in policy. Forty-six percent of fourth graders, uh forty-six percent of all fourth graders in the district were represented in the survey. Um, so what did we find out? Um, the first thing that we found out was that the majority of folks that we spoke with and heard from favored the three-zone um enrollment policy alternative. Uh, the feeder school policy alternative uh is uh was a close second for most groups. Uh, and as a reminder, the three-zone policy creates a separate zone for each middle school. The feeder school policy takes a c- a group of elementary schools and feeds it into a specific middle school. Um, this is very similar to what we heard from the community in spring, and it just reinforces the community's uh wish to move away from the current policy and adopt something that uh provides more integrated and diverse schools, just a few examples of what that looked like, these are cumulative results of the um town hall. Excuse me, the town hall results, what you're looking at is the blue is folks who voted to keep the current policy, the red is folks who voted to um expand to the three-zone policy, and the green is uh the feeder school model. Here we have the BUSD staff survey results, it's very close here overall. Um, there were more um pronounced differences when we looked at things like middle school teachers, um school staff. But these patterns where there's that preference for the three-zone is pretty consistent, what we're seeing a lot across many population groups, all the folks who responded to the survey in Spanish, the majority of those folks fit uh per- um prefer the three-zone. Um, here we have all the TK through eighth grade family um respondents here, um and then also because it is that first cohort, um, these are the responses, the survey responses of families of second through fourth graders. Um, the other thing this data tells us is that folks really know a lot, uh really have a preference for um for the policy, um that they 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 have chosen, very few people are not sure or, you know, really prefer something else. Um, one of the questions that we asked in the survey was trying to gauge exactly how much support different alternatives had. And here, I think you can see um the strength of the support for the three-zone compared to the other two alternatives. There are sixty percent folks very strongly or uh strongly agreed or uh agreed that they would be supporting this. Um, it and um few, many fewer folks uh opposed it, um with uh with more um folks neutral. So, excuse me, dry throat, so um just, uh, I know that we need to move quickly through this, but I did want to elevate some of the voices that we heard this fall. Um, the current policy works well for some families, um for a lot of different reasons, and I just want to um honor the voices of the families at Longfellow who chose that school. Um, they love the school because of the community, um the sense of community, there are affinity programs at Longfellow. And then we heard from folks at um who, you know, felt that this model perpetuated segregation. Um, it was resource-intensive to support, it um, it uh created inequities in resources across the school, some comments from folks about King having um much higher student populations than the others. And then there were perceptions of schools, um and I raised this because it's something for us to consider moving forward. Um, you know, folks thinking some schools were better than others, folks thinking that maybe this was just a Longfellow issue. Um, you know, people's understanding of the issue is something that we need to continue to um to communicate about and understand and um and and speak about. Um, the current policy, uh, it goes without saying, folks really um really like this policy. Oh, excuse me, my clicker is not working. Um, the three-zone policy, excuse me, is um is seen by many as a very simple alternative. It's familiar, it mirrors the um the three zones of the elementary school enrollment process. Um, folks, even folks who like this policy, had some concerns about uh academic and non-academic program com- comparability across the middle schools. Um, their resources and and wanting to see if any change was made, that there would be resources at all three schools to support a change. Um, transportation came up here really mostly in terms of folks who wanted to have uh schools within walking distance or to be able to ride and bike to their schools. Uh, and then a couple of comments about how the um how the borders were there. Uh, for one example of the um wish to have see programming uh more consistently across the school, uh, a lot of families spoke about and educators spoke about the importance of programs like Umoja and um wanting to expand that to the other three middle schools. The feeder school model, very simple to understand, very appealing, um keeps communities of of students together and actually, you know, and some parents commented, parents and guardians commented that they also wanted to stay together. Um, very appealing to folks because uh students will be transitioning together into middle school. Um, the social emotional um support and aspect that was that was being discussed earlier certainly is on a lot of people's minds. People thinking, you know, it'll help the transition to middle school, but at the other, on the other hand, there were also comments from folks who felt that it was important that as students entered middle school developmentally, that they should expand their their friends, their cohort, their communities. Um, and um and that will lead to growth. This particular, um, this particular alternative had, I would say, the strongest opinions about transportation. Um, a lot of folks didn't like that this model had students traveling across the district to middle school. Uh, there were also a number of comments throughout the fall from folks who felt that the model would not truly solve the issue of segregated middle schools, some folks pointed out that King's demographic makeup would uh remains the same in many ways, um there were a few comments uh similar to that about Longfellow. Um, and then in the uh, in the survey, I just want to highlight uh a number of comments from families who were concerned that adopting this model would provide increased pressure on the elementary school enrollment process, because where you go to middle school, excuse me, elementary school would lock you into middle school. Um, so overall, uh what, you know, what, in summary, what uh what we heard this fall is that, um, you know, the community would like to move on, would like to adopt a model that uh does have more integrated and diverse schools, but they would like some questions and concerns answered first. Um, people want it just a clearer picture of what it would look like to make these changes. Um, people would like to know what kind of support there would be for students who are starting off, um, you know, in that first year of a cohort under a changed policy. And then finally, I just want to highlight equity, access and inclusion issues separately. Um, and I really want to highlight um the concerns about racial isolation um and how that would affect students under different models. And I want to call that out separately because it is so important, and also a reminder um from some folks, but I feel like this one person really um eloquently said it, a reminder to all of us that diversity does not equal integration and inclusion, and the work to continue to make students feel truly included and their families feel truly included is ongoing. And I really feel like in some ways, that was sort of the theme of this evening, um as I was listening in. So the implications for us for the future are to continue to have multimodal um uh multimodal opportunities for engagement um to try to understand, you know, what times, what days, what places, what formats uh work for families, especially those we haven't heard from as much, to continue to work with partners, um if and when possible, to to try to be in-person, as Superintendent Stevens was saying, and to remain flexible. Um, and I thank you all for allowing me to share that with you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Smith, for your presentation, and we are not going to have questions from our school board directors, directors, if you have questions, you may raise your hand.
And if I might, President Brown, I I noticed that Francisco Martinez, who is our admissions manager, is also here this evening. Um, he's been an integral part of all of this community engagement, I want to thank him for the many, many hours he's put into this process. He's been really, I I think, such a key resource and explained to the community how our school enrollment process works.
Thank you so much for that recognition, uh, Mr. Martinez, welcome, and school board direction, directors, please feel free to um ask any questions to Ms. Smith and uh as well as Mr. Martinez, as he's joined us on the panel. Uh, Director Sinai.
Good evening, um, thank you for the great presentation, Ms. Smith, and thanks for being here, Mr. Martinez. Um, I have a a request. Um, given the the narrow margin between the the first two options being the three zones or the feeder program, um and I think people know that I I kind of lean toward the feeder program, but I'm totally open to to what we evolve into the dialogue, but what I'd like to do is to make sure that if there's any research or evidence or outcomes that we can find um in in um in a body of research that's out there around assignment processes. Um, and if there is experience or even um getting some interviews with some of our neighboring districts that do it in different ways and find out from them, like what they feel the impact is on their students and families. Like, I know West Contra Costa made this shift a few years ago into the theater programs that went from elementary, middle, and they have multiple high schools, so it goes, so you really are, you're and and Associate Superintendent Aurelio probably has very intimate res- uh understanding of that. But um kind of in the questions that that the families in the survey is asked, I would just add to that if there's any body of research that has looked at these kinds of issues, um I think it would be helpful so that it's not just kind of anecdotal and subjective, but that we also have some some data that shows us some impact. Um, I don't know if that kind of data exists, uh but I'd appreciate it if it does. Similar to the conversations we have at Berkeley High around block scheduling, is like we we wanted to do some, you know, scan of any research that might be available, so I'm just going to ask it, if it's out there, it would be helpful for our decision-making. And and thanks for the multitude, or what you call the multimodal um engagement. Um, I guess the other thing I was wondering, I don't know if the sample would be too small, but it would be interesting to see a disaggregated data of the the elementary age that, like, the second, you had that highlighted band of second, third and fourth graders, because they are the ones who are going to be kind of the ones first impacted. It would be interesting to see if we got a broader swath within that that group, I don't know if that's easy to pull.
You mean pull, pull all the elementary school, families, elementary school students overall?
Disaggregated by race.
Ah, ah, yeah, and I can, yeah, uh, I'm, I need to look at that sample size. I can tell you for the TK through eighth grade population, um, I did do the analysis by race, ethnicity, and all of all of the um families who responded um favored the three-zone, and sometimes it was a little bit more um uh by a wider margin. Um, for example, uh, the Latinx or Hispanic students, uh, families of Latinx or Hispanic students um favored the um three-zone forty-three percent compared to I eighteen percent for the feeder zone. So. But I will look into that, thank you.
Uh, Director Alper.
Thank you, President Brown, um, thank you, Ms. Smith, thanks, Mr. Martinez, um, Director Martinez. I guess I'm looking at, I'm looking at the slide that has the um, you have to put it up, I'm just looking at it on my screen of the the timeline. And I guess this is maybe for Dr. Stevens. The, it's, I mean, so the engagement efforts seem really robust, and and then I know there's more going on to try to to make sure that we reach um as many people who we haven't reached so far, yeah, that one, okay. And I guess, but so like, so this slide, like, so much of it is community engagement, and then at the very end, it's the board decides. And obviously, there's like, there's board presentations in the middle there, but um I guess to the, why I personally, you know, appreciate the community engagement, and so I have a, you know, a good sense of what the community wants, and as Director Sinai said, you know, disaggregated is super helpful. But but it's not a vote, so I'm, and I know, you know, you were sort of using that loosely, Ms. Smith, like that the, you know, a vote, but we're the ones who are voting, and 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 it's not, and and you know, I say that as someone, you know, on the other side, from Director Sinai, I lean towards not the feeder model, but but the fact that it has like slightly more people um who support it in what we've seen so far. It, the, really, the numbers don't mean all that much to me, especially when we know that, you know, we've, we, it's under, our Black families are underrepresented, and um, so it's like a snapshot to me that's really useful as a snapshot, and it's really helpful for the community to know what's going on and to know what the different options are. Um, that's what I see the engagement as being useful for. But but what but then I think we need to make, for us to actually make the decision, is that data, what is the community? What are, what are different segments of the community want, and and that's one piece of data. But then um the answers to a lot of the good questions that they've raised, you know, how is transportation going to work? You know, what is their research um that supports one policy or the other? Um, you know, what are, what are the different options with the maps and all things that I know Director Martinez is thinking about and you all are thinking about, but um, so I guess that's a long, a long preamble to a question of um, Dr. Stevens, what do you see as the next, I see these four things, but where where do we fit into to this? Um, so that it's not just at the end, it's not, I'll say one other thing, it's not like the school renaming where even it is our decision at the end, but but there's a really robust process at the school. And at least in in w- with the Ruth Acti, um, for example, we gave, you know, great deference to that process, and they kind of, that we know it wasn't an official vote, but they presented to us one one name, and and we approved it here, you know, that doesn't seem like the right model, and so I I'll stop talking, I think you maybe get my question, like, where do we go from here as a board?
Yep, yeah, I think it's a really good question. Um, what what I sort of feel we have in hand now is, as you've sort of described it, it's a good snapshot of um sort of concerns, questions, preferences in our community, um where we know we've got certain communities, we've got to engage more deeply. Um, but I think we're starting to hear surfaced the questions coming from representatives of those communities, which I think we're going to hear amplified as we do a different kind of engagement. Um, we are also hearing the um sort of where they, where our community wants more information, so it's specifically around academic programming and affinity-based programming at the three schools. Uh, specifically around transportation, how would that work? Um, and then there's um sort of more generally the sort of question about the quality of the inclusion experience in all of our schools, independent of the assignment model. Um, and those things feel now as if they're enough sort of questions for us to begin to develop draft answers, and that the next round of communication, the next round of engagement should really be around those sort of draft answers to these much more specific questions. Uh, we also have work as staff to to sort of understand if we were going to move in the direction sort of indicated in the preferences of the community, how much would that cost? Um, for thinking about expanded programming across multiple middle schools, we've got to cost that out, expanded transportation, we've got to cost that out. So I imagine that this next round, this next phase, third phase of engagement, is going to be much more specific in nature, um, having understood the broad preferences of the community. Um, where I also think that we might sort of have work to do is to um identify what might be called a finalist model um and solicit from the board direction or a vote, sort of depending on decisions made by board leadership uh about a potential finalist model, and that that might come even at the end of the school year, even if we plan to engage further through the summer and the next fall, uh leading towards a final vote. And I think that the sort of narrowing down to a finalist model uh may bring out additional concerns from the community, may bring out new people from the community, uh but also then enables us to sort of to have a final run of time, six, eight months, where we're looking just narrowly at a single option, uh and not trying to cr- compare broadly across multiple options. So that's my best thinking today, we've got some, now, now having received the report from Stacy Smith about this last phase, we want to pull away and sort of redesign phase three on the basis of what we now understand.
Okay, that's that's super helpful, and I appreciate it, and I guess I'll just reiterate the point I made, that at least from my one board member's perspective. Um, unless there's like an overwhelming preference of, you know, a wide swath of the community, if it's pretty close, um, then I think that's just one data point, and that staff's views and then the board's views, you know, ultimately um are are just as important. And that's, yeah, it's not to denigrate like the importance of engagement, it's, I guess I'm seeing the the purpose of the engagement is, is um get it, gathering the good questions and providing information, and I'm less interested in the sort of straw-polling of the community.
I I appreciate that thought, Director Alper, what I have been saying to folks as we've been meeting with them is that we're taking a snapshot of a picture in time. You know, and certainly another question is, you know, how do we measure who are speaking with even more? We did not collect demographic, student demographic information from everyone. And that's another piece, you know, that we need to think about moving forward. How do we do that more effectively as well? So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Director Vasudev and then Director Batten.
Thank you, President Brown. I just have a question, I guess, for the superintendent. I liked when you talked about, you know, figuring out the nuts and bolts and having now hearing like the main themes from the community of like, what are their concerns, how important that is. But again, who do we define as the community, right? Like, we're doing this because we want equity in mind. And, you know, with equity in mind, we really want to diversify our schools. But the percentage of black and brown parents that participated in these sessions has been pretty small, right? And so if we're really planning with, you know, our families of color in mind, then I really want costs for the affinity based programs for transportation. Like I think at one of the meetings that we had, I think it was the one with the EL group, I was listening to, I think they asked Ms. Smith about transportation. And what was described was there's a bus from the hills that will take kids to Longfellow or something like that. And the parents are like, well, what about us? Like, I don't, I don't live in the hills. So how am I going to get to King? Right? And so I think if we're, when we think of all these different categories that have been highlighted as key categories, right? And we start pricing out things, it's priced out, starting with what our most vulnerable families need. Let's start off with their needs in mind first. And so that's what I would say would be really helpful to me. And I think before we go, I don't think you have, you know, everything is kind of so close that you don't have a clear winner, right? Like these numbers, as Director Alper said, you know, the numbers are kind of, you know, like, everything's kind of so close. And the number of undecided and, you know, looking at that, you're like, well, there's some folks that are, there's a large proportion of folks that are still making up their mind about what they like. I feel like it would be helpful for us to start to answer some of those tangible questions for both models, right? Because we may see some data points that you're like, well, the transport, what is the transportation cost for, you know, the feeder school model? Is it really astronomically high? And what does it mean for us to pay versus partnering with AC Transit? Like, there's some key questions that we need to answer about these two models. Before we funnel to one model, I feel like we, there's an intermediate step where we need to look at the broad strokes and the broad stroke prices for both models. But I would say before that, make sure that we're pricing out what we heard from our black and brown families first and foremost.
Thank you for that.
Vice President Batten.
Thank you so much, and thank you for this presentation. And I also want to say thank you for taking the time to really meet with all of us as board directors, one on one, to really explain. I know that was a lot of additional personal time. We even met on like a Friday evening, late at night, right before break. So just want to acknowledge the depth of the work that you all are doing to really make sure that we can engage the community in a way in which we are all on the same page, fully understanding and getting our questions and concerns met. And definitely want to echo the comments of all of my board colleagues thus far. My question was going to be exactly to the superintendent around how we're going to budget this expansion and inclusion. So thank you for already exhibiting that forethought. And thank you also for your presentation for really highlighting, even though there were a few communities of color who participated, that was the major theme from those participants, at least in the African American Town Hall and in the discussions I've had with just Longfellow families, that diversity is one thing, but inclusion and belonging is where we need to go. And so even as we build out our budget considerations, how are we going to once again impact tier level one instruction? How are we going to impact welcoming school environments? How are we going to impact climate? So that there is no othering, so that we create a belonging, no matter what environment that our students are in. And I think that is the very important work that we need to do more than anything as we try and balance by diversity. You know, we're Berkeley, we started this in, as you said, in the presentation, when fifty, over fifty years ago, with integrating our schools. But yet we're still not at the point where people who are of color don't feel racial isolation, where we don't have disciplinary data, which, you know, it's disproportionate, where we don't have special ed reclassifications, they're also still disproportionate. So to me, the greater work is in that belonging as we answer these questions, right? As we talk about transportation, that's creating the belonging. As we talk about funding and expanding all of our direct programs, that's also the belonging. And if we can't really do that, if we can't afford that, given the budget considerations that we have, I think that is one of the stronger implications that we need to consider in a finalist model. Because those middle school years are extremely formative for a student's identity and a student's thought process about life, right? And we know that, again, so many families specifically chose Longfellow because of the racial isolation. And so that's the thing we definitely want to avoid replicating that K through five experience if we're not able to improve it and address it. So those will be my comments and my appreciations. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments and for your appreciations. Ms. Smith and Mr. Martinez, thank you all for your presentation this night and for the extensive amount of work that has gone into the outreach for our community members and thoughtfulness that has gone into this work. So thank you so much for being here. You're also free to leave unless you want to leave us with another comment before you depart.
I just want to say, actually, one of the things that really struck me about this process and listening to folks throughout this year is how important community is. You know, we speak about the Berkeley community, but there are so many different types of community. And I just, I just want to express my gratitude for being able to hear from so many folks about what community means to them. And also gratitude to all of those who helped us through this process. There's no way we could have reached who we did reach without the help of principals, you know, and Ophi and so many other folks. So I just wanted to end with gratitude.
I just want to say that I was really extremely happy. I understand that there were some specific groups that I would have liked to see more of them, like African American, Latinx communities. But I have to say that some of the communications and some of the meetings that we have that were rich and because it was a little bit fewer families, that we were able to have a conversation with them and where they were able to honestly express how they were feeling and what they, what they view us as what a middle schooler should be. And so I appreciated that.
Thank you both so, so much. And thank you again for being here. We will now move on to item thirteen point four, discussion of the Alameda County Office of Education Required Reductions to the 2022-2023 General Fund Budget. And I'm going to ask Superintendent Stevens to introduce Assistant Superintendent Follinsby, as well as give us a bit of information around this exercise, highlighting the intention and purpose of this exercise this evening.
Thank you very much, President Brown. So we learned over the summer from the Alameda County Office of Education that they felt concern like we do about the drop in enrollment that's taken place here in Berkeley Unified over the last two years. It's been well covered in Berkeley side and other media that we've lost about 600 students in that two-year period. About 400 students in the first year of the pandemic and about 200 additional students in this academic year. Most of this year's academic, sorry, enrollment loss has been experienced in that K five level. Now, when ACOE came to us to express this concern, they asked us to engage in an effort to begin a preliminary identification of potential reductions to our general fund spending for the 2223 school year. They wanted us to engage in this exercise, to take it seriously, to do our very best early on to identify potential cuts, essentially as a hedge against difficulties we might experience in the spring semester as we face difficult decisions. Essentially, it's a little bit of a down payment. We are now sort of in possession of a list. It's far from perfect. We know that we're getting very thoughtful feedback from committees, including the Sback Committee just last night, that we don't yet have the list that contains a sort of, that is composed entirely of ideas that are acceptable yet. We'd like to share that list with you so you get a sense of where we are after a round of committee engagement. We'll be back in a week on December fifteenth to ask for the board's approval of that list so that we can comply with ACOE's requirement. And then we know we're right back into the budget discussions come January and that we'll be in that mode through the entirety of the spring semester. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our sleepy birthday girl. Not only did we schedule a board meeting on your birthday, we wanted you to be the headliner, Pauline, so that you could go on at ten thirty.
Exactly. With two items, right?
So Assistant Superintendent Follinsby is going to walk us through the list as it exists this evening. We do welcome comments, keeping in mind that this really is a draft. And then we'll jump into a discussion about the interim report. That's the following presentation. So over to you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So I'm going to share my screen. I'm going to make sure I can do that. And as Superintendent Stevens mentioned, this is a draft of ideas of us actually meeting ACOE's requirement that we come up with a list of budget reductions that actually tie into budget reductions in the first interim. And let me see if I can go in present mode. Actually, it's not a presentation, so it's not going to go into present mode. So you would be familiar with this list of ideas. And there are some significant changes. When we first came to the board, we had a list of six, over $6 million in budget reductions. This list tonight, and I'll take you just walk you through the total. We're looking at a total of $4.6 million. And the significant change is we had a contribution to our nutrition services of $700,000 for year one and an additional $700,000 for year two, which is $1.4 million. Those two contributions, changes in contribution are actually included in our first interim. And as such, we've taken it off of this list of budget balancing solutions. And in addition, we had Elise, Ophi Lezam position, the position that was between the district and the Spanish bilingual position, it's the same position, I guess. But we've removed that, that is no longer in the consideration. So the list that we're looking at is totals $4.7 million. And our budget reduction target is now $4.6 million, which I'll be taking you through when we, when we look at the first interim. So in terms of feedback, we had a very, very robust meeting last night with Sback. And a lot of the discussion centered around our educational programs, in particular, the U nine. We had five speakers and a lot of feedback, very positive and informative feedback. And also some the concern about our TSCs. So we have notes here, and I know the board has received several comments and information on the U nine program. So the concern is, even though the U nine program, we're actually looking at small staff, small class sizes, the impact of changing the lead classes as well as the U nine will have an impact on changes on other students and the overall U nine structure. So Brent or Ruben may have additional comments, but the thinking was that it would be far, there would have far reaching effects if we were to change a U nine program. And I'm not sure if I summarized that correctly, Dr. Stevens.
I think you did a great job of it. Where we are in our process, we knew just in this sort of quick fall semester dash towards a preliminary list that we would engage three of our committees, PAC, DLEC and Sback, a couple of acronyms. We've tried to represent comments from those committees alongside each of the lines of this list. And you can see that there are comments interspersed across the three categories, which tells us both that we have sort of some additional responsibility to provide more detail and that we're encountering some concern from our committee members about these lists. Part of this has to do with the dilemma of timing. We, for example, did not want to get too specific in any idea about reducing TSA services because we don't yet have revenue information from the state of California. It feels very premature to start naming particular positions. So we're going to sit with this tension for a little while. We're still, we hope, planning to submit the list on the fifteenth to ACOE. And as I said before, we'll go right back into deliberations in January. And I think in a much more sort of measured way, begin to fill in some of these, these blank spots for our committees.
Correct. Thank you. And there was also discussion around our IE positions or contracted IE positions. And there was a concern that hiring IEs is difficult as it, as is. And it's difficult to fill those positions. And the recommendation to grow our internal program was accepted, well-accepted. So these, a lot of our discussion was around the educational programs. You can see PAC's input and DLEC's input as well. And as Dr. Stevens says, it's the preliminary list, we are going to be bringing it for approval. But we're also going to be using this, the jumpstart, more, more serious discussions in the following year when we know what the revenue is from the governor. In our operations, this item for targeted reductions in operational expenses has includes laying off or not filling positions that are currently vacant. And there was a discussion in terms of one of our positions or DSA position in terms of what would be the impact if we reduced, we currently have two positions. If we reduced one, what would that impact be? And we explained that the service hours would be aligned with the hours that the district offices opened, an additional task will be reassigned. So I think that was an acceptable explanation. The, there was general agreement, the second administrative position for Ophi was not needed. And I'm not sure, the DLEC, DLEC and PAC, their opinions on Ophi's listed here. And they are, the request to keep the position for the both Spanish language and for targeting black and brown students, we actually removed that one from the list. So I think there's an alignment problem there. But just suffice to say, we didn't get to the point where we would actually get a rating from our Sback. We needed additional information. And we did this together rather quickly, along with our budget leadership team and Sback. And I think it's a good beginning point in terms of opening these discussions and coming up with a list for ACOE. But it also, we also need a lot more work next year when we have the information from the governor's budget. The enrollment, nine, we are adjusting class size. It was expressed that that was a staffing form, not really a budget reduction. So that isn't, it's a budget balancing solution, but it's not a reduction. So again, these are balancing budget solutions, not necessarily budget cuts. So that's the list we had presented before. If there are specific details about the list, I'll be happy to answer it. But just overall, still have a lot of work to do. But it's a very productive discussion. And I look forward to continuing the discussion next year with Sback and our budget partners. So with that, I will take questions or comments.
Superintendent Follinsby, if you don't mind.
If you don't mind sharing, oh, actually, no, I can see the questions from the side. Sorry, I didn't think I could see people's hands. Director Vasude.
Hi, thank you so much, Associate Superintendent Follensby. My questions were around the TSA positions. Is there a list of which TSA's would be impacted by that cut? And the reason I asked, and I know Associate Superintendent Odely was at that meeting to. D lack was really, you know, expressed a lot of concerns about which TSA's we were talking about, and they wanted more details. And so I just wanted to see if there was a list or if there was any more information about the TSA positions that you're thinking about and cutting in this budget. And then I would also just like to learn a little bit more about the logic for the eight to one ratio for the U nine program for the leap program.
I I think I'll take both those questions. So with the TSA's, we did begin to narrow in our focus on centralized TSA's or district level TSA's. When you look at the budget principles, principle one was to sort of stay furthest away from their direct services to students. So instead of looking at directly at their site based TSA's like lit coaches, ELT, ELDT, TSAs. RTI TSA's, those that were working directly with students, we focused our attention more on the centralized TSA's. So the ad services team is right now going under an analysis of those centralized TSA positions. We're working with both business services and human resources to get a sort of cleaner version of our position control. That was brought to to attention last night and S fact that it is still a little challenging to. Understand exactly, we see some things in position control that show vacancies or open positions, but really accounting for those and making sure those are truly open. So we're doing some cleanup work that needs to happen before we really land on a position. I did mention to the D lack group that any title three funded TSA's obviously would not be impacted. Because that's not a reduction in the general fund. And so really letting them know that that's, you know, the ELDT TSA's that are site based would not be touched in these reductions. As far as the U nine and the leap sections of eight to one, just a bit of data that we we know we we are looking at the data around leap. Specifically because that is an sort of intervention that we offer our students in the U nine. We know it's a very important part of the structure of the whole cohorting of students. And currently that those numbers are really low in enrollment. We have eighty one students across twenty sections boils down to a four to one ratio for class sizes for sections. So that that's a hefty cost for the number of students are being served in that structure. We know that it's greater than that because it's part of a complete structure of U nine. And we did hear that feedback from our teachers and our vice principal. So we really are examining the impact it would make if we reduced some of those sections. If if we doubled class size, or we could still serve an eight to one ratio with half those sections, if you're just doing simple straight math, right? However, we know that that's it's not a simple reduction that way, that when you eliminate ten sections of the twenty. You now have teachers who went from having a one point O FTE to a point eight FTE, and they have to pick up a class outside of the U nine structure. And that complicates things. It complicates things for the structure of the program, and it complicates things for scheduling around. The high school. So it's definitely something we're taking into consideration. We're not going to make a blanket decision around this program. But we are looking at, you know, I I want to look at the data. I want to, you know, really ensure that the program is doing what the program's intended to do. Are we really impacting some of our media students with this leap section and the cohorting? So I that that was budget principle, think number three, which is data driven decisions around the work.
And can you share that data with us if it if it is ready by next week? Or any more details around the TSA analysis if if that is ready by next week? And I also just want to say that I really appreciate based on the discussion previously had previously had on the budget. The removal of the bilingual central office position from from the list. So much for your work.
Director Sina.
Thank you for the presentation again. I I just I want to share. My continued disappointment with ACOE. And putting us in the position of having to create budget cuts when we don't know. What the next year's budget is going to be. It's clear that we don't really have a choice in the matter, but. I'm 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 not happy about it. And in that mode of this being kind of an exercise. A good exercise to kind of chew on things. And I know we're not voting on it tonight, and you know, I'm I'm I'll. Probably vote on whatever we decide to come up with, but I want to be really clear that it is not binding. And it is not well informed, in all honesty, because twenty five to thirty percent of those cuts are in special ed. Special ed are disproportionately are African American students. Special ed, the reason we're contracting out is because we can't hire. We've never run an adult program inside Berkeley Unified. We've contracted with this nonprofit for a long time. They're very connected. So the the leap of faith that we're going to be able to cut a million and a half dollars out of our special ed program. I now maybe we'll be forced to do it, and we have to figure it out, but I'm extremely uncomfortable. With twenty five to thirty percent of those cuts coming out of special ed now. With the understanding it's an exercise and it's not binding. And maybe it'll push us to do some evaluation and assessment that we didn't have. That was good. But I just want to be really clear that that it will not be a sign of what my vote will be. When we're doing real budget deliberations in January and February. And I appreciate all the work you're doing for the exercise.
Yeah, and and thanks for being so clear in in previewing your thinking with us. That's that's super helpful to us.
Uh, Director, Vice President of Babid. Sorry, I I promise I won't do that again tonight.
That's okay, President. Um, well, I echo Director Sina's comments. We are completely aligned with what she's saying, and I am hoping that. If we can come out of this with creating some efficiencies that we will take our time and do it thoughtfully. But in no ways would I think we would actually be ready to do that kind of in house things. You know, as quickly as the next school year. And I want to thank Pauline Follins, Assistant Superintendent Follinsby for her work. And for the audit committee meeting where we went through this and other things in much detail, I was able to ask a lot of my questions there. So I will just take this time to say, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday.
Thanks, Vice President Babid.
That was beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Babid, and happy birthday.
Thank you, President Brown.
You are welcome.
Thank you, thank you. All right, there aren't any more questions in regards to item thirteen point four. So Superintendent Assistant Superintendent Follensby, we will pass it right back over you. For item fourteen point one for the proof of the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two first interim report.
Okay, so I'm going to be presenting with Director Karam. So I need her to be promoted to a panelist. If we could do that. And then I'm going to share my screen again. And hopefully I can find. I hold on.
Thank you so much, Ms. Badias, for promoting Director Karam. She's here with us. Welcome, Director Karam.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
So good night again. So Liz and myself will be presenting the first interim. And I'll take you through this pretty quickly. And and then we'll take questions at the end. So again, our goal, we do, we need the board formal approval of our first interim budget. The agenda, we're going to look at the unrestricted general fund, the highlights, the various report and the multi year projections. And then we're going to spend this a very brief minutes on our budget priorities and the impact that the governor's budget may have on these priorities. As well as our next steps. So again, we're looking at the first interim and that goes for transactions through October. Which project our operations for the entire year. So we do have a positive certification, and that's only after implementing four point six million dollars. In budget reductions, which we spoke about earlier. And that will be brought back to the board for approval on December fifteenth. At the first interim, our deficit spending by one point six million dollars. And we have an undesigned needed fund balance of one point seven million dollars. What's also notable is that we have two point three million dollars of board approved expenditures. In September, we came to the board with a list of expenditures that should would be paid for by Fund twenty. And that those expenses are now reflected in the first interim. A bit of good news, we did have an increase in our unduplicated pupil count. By a hundred and seventy one students, and there's a link to our unduplicated pupil count. And if we open that link, you will see that a lot of increases happened at the high schools. Both high schools and at the middle school. So we did a concentrated drive or a very intense drive to try and increase. Our unduplicated pupil count based on the the meal, they the meal. What was it called? The alternative meal form? And I think it was successful because we did, in fact, see an increase of a hundred and seventy one students. And that in that in turn. Cause an increase in our supplemental funding. And now I'm going to turn it over to Director Karam for her to take us through the variance report.
Hi, everyone. We're going to talk about the changes between the adopt the budget that we adopted back in June. And the first interim in the first interim budget. So the first thing that really comes up is. As Association Superintendent Follensby was talking about. But we we increased our supplemental revenue. So the hundred and seventy one student additional unduplicated. Pupil count. Created about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in additional revenue. So that was very helpful. And on the expenditure side, you can see that total expenditures went up by almost two point two two point nine million dollars. But of that, the increase was for COVID related and other expenditures funded by a transfer, transfer from Fund twenty. Which, as Polly mentioned, is a was approved by the board on September eighth. So that's two point three million dollars of that increased expense. Then there were other ongoing and one time expenditures of one point two million dollars. The largest of which was on go an ongoing increase in special education transportation. That's about two hundred, four hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. So those additional expenses totaled one point two million dollars. However. There's an offset to that, those increases because of about eleven million dollars in additional. Spending in restricted resources. The general fund receives it direct support and indirect cost, cost from those resources. Of almost seven hundred thousand dollars. So that's seven hundred thousand dollars offset the additional expenses. That were incurred. So the the next thing is really to look at the transfers in a funds in an inter fund transfers in and out. So as was mentioned, the there was a, we had originally budgeted a contribution to. The cafeteria fund of seven hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars because of a change in cafeteria fund funding. Our nutrition services funding that contribution is not needed any longer, so there's a savings there of seven hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. Transfers in there, you can see it be the transfer in is the two point three million dollars from Fund twenty. Contribution. So then the contributions, other contributions in is an additional is additional. Funding from B sub. The contribution increased because of a negotiated increase in salaries. For contracts ratified after the since or during first interim. So that's about a hundred and forty seven thousand dollars more going into the general fund. And then the the contribution out decreased that said special education contribution. For transfer to special education transportation, but that's really just a really a correction in how the budget was originally recorded. So if we sort of move down the list. You can see that there's the ending fund balance is three point four million dollars, which is an increase of about seven hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. And that's approximately equal to the reduction in the contribution to the cafeteria fund. So we ended up with, we're ending up with a little bit more. And then finally, if you look at the components of the ending fund balance. You can see at the economic uncertainties, three percent economic uncertainties. Because we're spending more money. That much more money, the three percent reserve has increased, so it increased from two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars to almost six hundred thousand dollars. And that increases attributable attributable to the additional expense, so about three hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. Is attributable to the increased spending that has been at was added between the adopted budget and the first interim.
Okay. And and then the other page, these other pages show the um, Lisa already explained this, but the explanation is also attached. To the variance report, the letters are explained on the third page. So, all right, thank you, Liz. That was great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll take us back to the to the first interim. So we can then look at our multi year projections, and this is where we look at the current year and two subsequent years. And determine we've removed the one time expenses. So that two point three million dollars that Liz mentioned in the variance report. Those expenses are not flowing forward. And then the impact of the ADA, which is our fiscal cliff, which you've been talking about and. Resulted in the four point six million dollars in budget reductions in twenty two, twenty three, which we have discussed earlier. And of course, we don't know what the state is. If we're going to be getting any more funding from the state or the federal government. So that may mitigate the or eliminate the need for budget reductions in the out year. So this is our multi year at the first interim. No change in our cola, our ADA, our funded ADA. Because of the hold harmless were funded at nineteen nineteen twenty levels. And of course, in twenty two, twenty three and twenty three, twenty four, we're using the assumptions based on projections from that Francisco gave us. So we we were looking, when we're coming up with budget reductions or the impact on our budget. We actually did our teacher template to this to to determine how much B sub was going to be giving us. As well as. As well as the cost, overall cost for teachers and so on. But we took this ADA funded and built our our multi year projections on that. And the unduplicated pupil count reflects the increase that we talked about in twenty one, twenty two. So in terms of revenue. Not we can see that we got the mega cola in twenty one, twenty two, the five point oh seven percent. And we're no, we have, we have no change in the assumption as yet. We'll see what the governor's budget actually provides. There is talk about us getting. Another a cola of probably about five percent, and that would mean a significant increase in our revenue. And in looking at our expenses, this is where. And in looking at our expenses, this is where we are, the budget adjustment comes into into play, the four point six million dollars. This is ongoing budget reductions in twenty-two, twenty-three. It's not an additional amount, it's just one ongoing rate, and it scored twice because this is just a snapshot. So as you can see with these budget reductions, we're actually, we have a balanced budget. We have a positive ending fund balance, and we are able to meet to meet our three percent. So so these budget reductions are necessary for us to maintain our positive certification. And as such, we'll be providing the list of budget reductions to Alameda County Office of Ed as requested. This is our contribution, and and the significant thing on this slide is that our contribution that we got board approval for to, back in September, the two point three million that dollars that we mentioned, that's one time. So it doesn't continue all the way across. And everything else is business as usual until we have additional information to build of these, to change these assumptions in the out year. So in terms of our budget priorities, when we, when we came up with the list of budget reductions, we're focusing on the impact on our budget for the for the loss of ADA. We have not talked, started to talk about our one-time expenses, and we have about three million dollars in one time, in ongoing, potentially ongoing expenses funded with one-time revenue. So that's going to be the incorporated in our budget priorities when we start our traditional budget cycle after the governor has released his, released his budget in January. So we have a lot of, a lot of work ahead of us because now we have to take into account, not only the impact of our ADA, but also our ongoing expenses paid for by one-time funding. But as I mentioned earlier, there is promising outlook for state revenue. And there's discussion of us getting a COLA of five percent. And I think those of you who went to the CSBA conference, I know that that COLA was actually discussed at that conference.
I think President Brown, are you there? I think we're going to have to move to extend the meeting.
Okay, I'll take a motion to extend the meeting to eleven fifteen. Assistant Superintendent Follensbee, you have about two more, two or three more slides, right?
This is my last slide, actually, so.
Okay, this is your last one. So I'll move to, I'll move to extend the meeting to eleven thirty. Is there a second? Or I'll ask for a motion to extend the meeting to eleven thirty.
Do we need eleven, do we need thirty minutes?
Can we do eleven-ten or eleven-fifteen?
To to extend the meeting to eleven thirty means that we have until eleven thirty if we need it. If we don't need it, we won't use the time.
Okay, so the pressure is on to not need it.
I'm with you, I'm with you, Director Vice President Babid, but I'll make, I'll second the motion.
Okay, so I'll wrap this up really quickly, so.
We got a vote, we got a vote.
Oh.
Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Director Vasilev?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Enthusiastically.
Director Alper?
Reluctantly.
What was that, Director Alper?
Yes.
He said yes.
Vice President Babit?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes. You may continue with your presentation. Sorry about the interruption.
Really quickly. So so we'll be bringing back the second interim in March. So we'll have a little bit more information at that time. And of course, our budget cycle will begin in January. So we'll be working on our budget priorities as well as balancing our budget based on the governor's budget. The budget calendar has already been approved, which is, you know, it's a little early this year. And of course, we have continued, we've already convened and started meeting with our budget advisory committees, and we will continue to work on the adopted budget in the upcoming year. That's it, I am done, and I can take, we can take questions at this point. Okay.
Thank you so much, Director Alper. Do you have a question?
Yes, I won't take thirty minutes, though. Thank you for that, Assistant Superintendent Follensbee. Am I right that nothing in what you just presented takes into account the collective bargaining that we're going to need to engage in with all four of our unions? Is that right?
That's correct.
So I just want to, I I think President Meyer mentioned it in his comments, but but I think it's something that we need to keep in mind, but that we're going to be negotiating with all of, all four of our unions in the spring. And and to highlight the last thing that you mentioned, Assistant Superintendent Follensbee, about how much of what we have started and talked a lot about tonight is being paid for by one-time funds. And so those two things combined have made me feel less like what we're, what ACOE is making us do is sort of this academic exercise. Like, I agree with what you said, Director Sinai, about the the specifics of it, and that what we're, you know, we're not locking ourselves into anything specifically when we, you know, approve, what we need to approve next, next week. But but I think we're sort of fooling ourselves if we think that just because the state budget picture is, you know, looks pretty good, and we will be getting more money, that we're not still going to have to make some painful cuts. So I just wanted to say that because I think that's, that's still coming down the road. It may not be as much as we're having to make, having to, you know, approve next week tentatively. But I think it, I think it's still going to be some painful cuts. That wasn't a question, that was just a comment.
Okay. Thank you, Director Alper Figur, not question but comment. Are there any other comments or questions from other members of the board? No? Okay, hearing that.
Do you want me to just read like the newspaper out loud for the next half hour?
You can do that.
My screen.
You can do that if you want to. Or we can sing happy birthday again. Thank you so much, Assistant Superintendent Follensbee, for your presentation and for the hard work that went into this.
We got to move, wait, 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 we got to, we got to approve, we got to.
I'm not.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
And we will see you again for the next part of, next part of this. But right now, we do need to approve the recommendation that you have given us this evening. So is there a motion, I think President Alper Zieger, to do it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just having trouble giving up the power.
Are you, are you missing this already?
Thank you for calling me President Alper. Just for nostalgia, for nostalgia. I will move to approve the first interim.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Ms. Barrios, can please call the roll?
Director Vasilev?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Vice President Babit?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes. All right, thank you. We will now move on to the second opportunity for public comment. If you're here for public comment, this is the perfect time to raise your hand. Wow, seeing no hands, we will move to the second opportunity for board member comments. Are there any board member comments? Seeing none, we will now adjourn for this evening. Thank you all for a wonderful evening and.
We have twenty-nine more minutes.
Wow, what are we going to do? And meeting adjourned.
Bye. Good job, President Brown. Great, great job, President Brown.
Thank you, thank you all.
And Rosalina Barrios, you got all our time, right?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Barrios.
Pleasure to do it, thank you for the night.
Good night.
You both.